We're ready. Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order here at 9:00 a.m. It looks like we're... We got a full, almost a full house here. Our September 20th, 2022 meeting, welcome to our Board of Supervisors meeting. And as customary, we will conduct a moment of silence. And I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Antoinette Snow of Upper Lake. She's preceded in death by her brother, Jib Snow, Lonnie Snow, and then also her father and mother, Pauline Snow and Robert Snow. She left at a very young age, and so we offer condolences to the community, the family. And so, thank you. Vice Chair Pyska, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Next is item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the agenda. Are there any to consider? No, not as of now? All right. Yes. Okay. All right. All right. So item five, approval of a consent agenda. Consent agenda items are commonly items that are non-controversial. However, anyone from the public or from the Board of Supervisors can pull for a later discussion. And so, are there any items to pull from the consent agenda? I know first and foremost, there is 5.17, which will be pulled. And there's no other discussion or anything. And then 511 will be for a future date. I do know that there's been a request for 5.12 as well. And then Supervisor Sabatier, do you have any?
Yeah, I'd like to check, check. Hello? Hello? Check. Hello? There we go. 5.8, please.
5.8. And then, so are there any others from the board? Okay. I'll open it up to the public. Are there any from the public? And Joan, you were raising your hand if you'd like to come to them. Okay. 5.8. So we have 5.8. And so what we'll do is, the agenda seems pretty... It's pretty timely, so we're going to do most of those after 1:00. And so, if anyone's here for a consent agenda item, we will be considering that after 1:00. And I won't fit any of those in. I'll fit the seven points, non-timed items in between if need be. So that way, people can come back and they don't have to worry about us addressing consent agenda item for that. So I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.7, 5.9 through 5.10, and 5.13 through 5.16. And I think that's correct, from the consent agenda.
It is. All right.
Chair, I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. It looks like we're at 9:03. With that, I will... Let's see. So 7.5, we'll conduct that one, which is a Lake County Mental Health Board. And it looks like we have Camille Cummings. And so, are there any discussions from the board on this? No? I'll open it up to the public for 7.5, for the Mental Health Advisory Board. Did not see anybody or no hands up. I will look again. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to appoint applicant Camille Cummings, or reappoint, as member-at-large for the Lake County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. So that one, we can take off the list. We're at 9:04.
Got five seconds.
Oh, good. Okay. Come on. Let me just... There we go. So we're at hour... 9:05, Lake County Animal Care and Control Pet of the Week. And it looks like we have a friend here.
Good morning. My name is Haley Delphy-Arentino. I'm an officer of Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me this morning is Rusty. He's a two-and-a-half-year-old German Shepherd. For a German Shepherd, he's actually very mellow. But as you can see by my pants, he is shedding like crazy right now. He is currently in kennel 25. He's been with us for a little while. When he first came into us, he was really shy, didn't want to come out of the kennel, didn't really want to interact with anybody. Thankfully, due to our staff, working with him at the shelter, he's really come out of his shell. Still doesn't know what toys are, but he does identify as a lapdog. Rusty, like I said, is in kennel 25. If anybody wants to come by and see him, we're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport. Or they can give us a call at 707-263-0278. And just so everybody knows, we are having an adoption event this week, both Friday and Saturday. We're going to be at The Pumpkin Patch on Highway 29 from about 10:00 to 5:00.
All right. Do we have any takers? All right. Thank you for that. All right. We'll move on to our next item, public input, our 9:06. And so at this time, if there's an item that's not considered on the agenda today, we will go ahead and... I do have paperwork in for somebody, for Yvonne Cox. And then I see someone in the back with their hand up as well. So Yvonne, you would be the first one. So if you'd like to come up and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to...
Good morning. My name is Yvonne Cox. I'm the director and founder of Are You Hunger?, a nonprofit I run in Lucerne, 22 years. I have been handling Lake County's problems for years. Everything from your homeless, to doing outreach, where I give out tents, sleeping bags, food, on a regular basis. I've worked every one of our fires. And recently, Elijah House folded, and I was called, again, can you help us? I get called regularly from social services, Elijah House, behavioral health, just to name a few. But yet, I'm not recognized enough to be given grants. These grants go to like Elijah House, and I'm still cleaning up the mess. I picked up eight people that they threw on the street with no vouchers. Now, can you imagine if I was funded, what I could do? Look what I do with nothing. I have never received a grant from this county, not even acknowledgement. I have a congressional award. I don't want to be glorified. I want backing. I want to be able to take care of these problems, so it's not taking out of my family's pockets that I'm being funded where it should come from, the county. Elijah House folded. And when they folded, threw everybody on the street, I was the first one they called. And of course, I showed up with a truck and a car, took the people to my house. They're all clean and sober, nice young people, just had a bad issue. They got thrown out with nowhere to go, and there was no support. And there was nobody in charge to think ahead, where are these people going to go? So of course, guess who they called? And, as usual, I clean up the mess, I pick it up, and then they all talk smack. Don't trust her. Okay? Well, you trust me enough to solve your problems. I'm just here to say, if I can do what I do without funding, can you imagine what I could do if I was funded? I just want to be here to let you know, I'm not going to stop doing what I do. But it would run a lot smoother, and I could help a lot more people, if somebody took into consideration, I'm the one that's still cleaning up the mess. Thank you. Any questions?
Yvonne, we're not allowed to like comment on public input items, but however, if there's someone you would like to talk to after, that can move forward on that. So I know that... Don't want to comment too much, but however, maybe Todd and I can talk with you at a later time in regards to some of this.
Just so my voice is heard. I'm tired of being silent and doing all the work. Like I said, I could be a lot more effective and help a lot more people if we were funded. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other public input?
Good morning, everyone. My name's Savannah Feath with the Register of Voters Office. And I would just like to take this time to tell you about National Voter Registration Day, which is today, September 20th. It's a time to celebrate the voting process by making sure we are registered to vote, as well as members of our community, like our families and our neighbors. You can register to vote by going online at registratovote.ca.gov, or you can come visit us at our office at 325 North Forbes Street. You can also call our office at 707-263-2372, and we can mail you a voter registration form. They're also available at all the post offices and libraries in Lake County. It's very important to make sure that we're registered, so we get our ballots on time for Election Day. And also, in the spirit of voting, I would just like to put out there that we also need people to work the polls. Currently, we are filled, but if anybody would like to be on our call list, if there's callouts, we would love to have more people to contact to work on Election Day. I have voter registration forms with me in the back, as well as poll worker forms, if anybody would like to register to vote today. Thank you.
I have a quick question before you... I'm going to put you on the spot here, I'm sorry. When is the last day to register to vote for this upcoming general election?
So that's 15 days before the election day. I don't have that date right in front of me. But if anybody would like to know the date specifically, please call our office. We'd be able to give that to you right away.
So get registered before mid-October.
Yeah. October 24th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Savannah.
Thank you. All right. Any other public input? I'll look online. I don't see any hands up. So I'm bringing it back to the board for the next item on the agenda. 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of September, National Suicide Prevention Month. The week of September 4th through September 10th, National Suicide Prevention Week, and September 10th, World Suicide Prevention Day. And Supervisor Simon will read this proclamation.
I think so.
Yeah, I'll take it. Thank you.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California Proclamation, Designating the Week of September 4th through September 10th, National Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas September is recognized as a suicide prevention month, and the week of September 4th through the 10th, 2022, is National Suicide Prevention Week, at a time in which individuals, organizations, and communities around the country join their forces to amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. And it is recognized that people of all ages benefit from common tenets of wellness, such as access to effective health and behavioral health care, social support, and a sense of meaning and purpose. And whereas attitudes and perceptions about aging, behavioral health challenges, and suicide have a significant impact on individual wellness and the willingness to reach out for support and services that can alleviate distress. And whereas cultivating and maintaining wellness is a lifelong pursuit, and individuals of all ages can benefit from integrating wellness into their daily routine to prevent or reduce the severity of broad range of health and behavioral health problems. Whereas knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to talk with someone that may be thinking of suicide, and reaching out to local resources are actions everyone can take to care for themselves and others. The Lake County Behavioral Health Prevention Team has trained 721 community residents in suicide prevention. All Californians are urged to take action for suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness, as we strive towards zero suicides by inviting more community members to contact Lake County Behavioral Health Services for information for the suicide prevention services offered. And whereas the month of September is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Month, providing the opportunity to educate and engage everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Lake County Behavioral Health Services and all members of the Lake County Board of Supervisors on the 20th day of September 2022, that the month of September 2022 be declared Suicide Prevention Month, and that the day of September 10th be declared World Suicide Prevention Day. Passed and adopted this 20th day of September 2022. Signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Todd Metcalf, Lake County Behavioral Services. I'm not going to take up a lot of time, because you know how long-winded I can be. I do want to point out, and this is awesome. Thank you, Board of Supervisors. We do need to recognize this. Lake County unfortunately has the distinction of having one of the highest, or if not, the highest, suicide rate in the state. And so, to shine a spotlight on this is... It's very humbling, but it's something that we need to be aware of and talk about. So there are other folks here. I don't know if anybody else wants to say something, but I will step aside. Thank you for this proclamation.
Good morning, and I just want to thank the board for helping us and supporting us through our outreach efforts to the community. We are, you know, as the proclamation stated, we are a... We've trained 721-plus people in question persuade, refer, or mental health first aid. We also have the teen mental health first aid, which works with our youth. And we are just trying to really get the message out that it's okay to not be okay. And if, you know, you notice that someone is struggling, or they have, you know, multiple challenges going on, talk to them. You know, just ask them how they're doing. And just have a conversation. And if they are suicidal, then, you know, reach out to some supports. We have our newly-launched outreach van. And, you know, staff that is on the outreach van have been trained in knowing the signs and how to help people. So, and it's a white van with green lettering. It says, people, you know, helping people. And that's what we do. One of the goals is to link people with services that they may be needing. So, and, you know, our team is small. We have Michael Moss and Kendra Boyce right now, and Tom Yenick, that are providing these services. And we are growing our team, but we wouldn't be able to do it without our community partners and our peer support centers. So I want to just thank you guys so much.
And don't forget to introduce yourselves.
Oh, sorry. Carrie Manning, Lake County Behavioral Health Services, supervising behavioral specialist. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say something real briefly about that. Michael Moss, Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I'm a prevention specialist. Thank you, board. Thank you to the public that supports all of our efforts. We couldn't do it without you and the agencies that are involved as well. I just wanted to point out real quick, on the subject of suicide, we have a meeting today with Middletown High School. And I've passed a couple of little flyers out to the board there. It's called a directing change program. And what this does is introduces the information about suicide, about mental health awareness, through art and film. So we have a meeting today with Middletown High School that will introduce this into their peer support program class. And what this will do is, it'll promote a film contest. And there's prizes involved, there's things like that, that will actually get the students involved in this. We're very excited about it, because this is a national program. And they will be able to implement their... Submit their films about suicide, about mental health, what they feel about it. They will cohort with another classroom. So we're looking forward to that, and we'll keep abreast on what happens. Hopefully, Middletown High School will come home with a victory and get that film nationally recognized. It'll be all over the place and displayed. So yeah, thank you. Be aware.
Thank you. I think we have someone online as well. April Giambri. If you'd like to unmute and...
Hello. Hello, Mr. Chair, members of the board. April Giambri, the County Behavioral Health Services. I didn't have an opportunity to be there today, but I really wanted to just say thank you to everybody who worked, both in the community and worldwide, to really address the stigma around suicide prevention. And all of the work and efforts that is being done is amazing. I couldn't be more proud of our small and mighty board. So I just wanted to...
Thank you. Any other comments, Supervisors, about you?
So I have a couple of comments quickly. Number one, this is an important thing. Outside of natural causes of death, this is our second leading cause of death. Mr. Moss, I want to get in touch with you. Let's see if we can make a quick advertisement for getting more videos on PEG TV. Let's use our community TV station to advertise that. And maybe if approved by those who create the videos, maybe we can play those videos on PEG TV as well. I think it's important to put out the message. And it's another way of supporting this proclamation, outside of just verbalizing it during our meeting. It's committing to other outlets as well, to help out with putting out the message. And then Director Metcalf, wondering if you can provide a number for people who are thinking of harming themselves, or people who believe they have friends or family members or colleagues that are also feeling down and maybe possibly leading in that direction? Is there a specific number that they should be reaching out to? I don't know that I've heard that today, and I just want to make sure that we put it out there. I would look to my... Can you address that?
You can text 741-741. That is a texting line for suicides.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
Kimberly Gera, Redwood Community Services. You can text 741-741 to get on-demand support if you're experiencing suicidal ideation, or you're just really struggling with mental health.
And then I would like to also... Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Carrie Manning, Lake County Behavioral Health, again. So our local crisis number is 1-800-900-2075.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you.
I should have been watching first before I opened my mouth. Veteran Crisis Line as well. A lot of veterans have the same, have a lot of issues with that. And so there's a dial 988, then press 1. There's a chat online for Veteran Crisis Line. And then text 838-255. And I think the videos are very important. I know that Tribal Health conducts digital storytelling, which helps with people to tell their story about their life. And it might be good to collaborate. And then I know that they have a veterans video source as well. I did one back in like 2008. And so veterans go on and tell their story of their deployment, their upbringing. It's a real healing, you know, mechanism as well. So yeah, just wanted to add that. Thanks. All right.
You need to get a ladder.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. So I did open it up for public comment. I didn't see anyone in the chambers or online except for April. So I'll bring it back to the board and close this item out. Move on to our 9:08. Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month in Lake County, California. And Supervisor Sabatier will be reading this proclamation.
Good morning, everybody. Today, we want to recognize the vast contributions of our Latino community in not just Lake County, but across the state of California as well. There is a very deep, rich, and long history of that here. So I'll go ahead and start. Proclamation Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month in Lake County, California. And I'll pause. It's not really a specific month. I think it's September 15th to October 15th. So it spans between September and October. Whereas, Lake County wishes to celebrate the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans who have helped shape our county. We are grateful for the many contributions Hispanic American men and women make to our communities and the vibrancy they weave into our local culture. And whereas, Lake County believes that in diversity, we are strengthened by our diverse beliefs, thoughts, cultures, and experiences. All Hispanic Americans who live in our county have and continue to enrich our classrooms, our neighborhoods, and our places of work. And whereas, from America's earliest days, Hispanic Americans have played a prominent and important role in our national heritage, and Hispanic Americans continue to embody the pioneering spirit of America today. Demonstrating a steadfast commitment to faith, family, and hard work, Hispanic Americans lift up our communities and our economy as entrepreneurs, executives, and small business owners, and make contributions in areas such as science, art, music, politics, academia, government, and sports. And whereas, Hispanic-owned small businesses are the fastest-growing businesses in America, starting at a pace 15 times the national average over the last decade. Hispanic Americans own more than 3 million American businesses and serve with honor in all branches of the armed forces, continuing a strong legacy of dedication to our country. Hispanic Americans are a testament to the American promise that anyone can succeed in the United States through hard work. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lake County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim September 15th, 2022 through October 15th, 2022... There it is. As Hispanic Heritage Month in Lake County, passed and adopted this day of September 2022 and signed by our chair. Thank you. And I do want to add, this speaks very generally, but we are seeing this in our community. We are seeing more and more businesses coming from our Hispanic and Latino community. And I want to give some kudos. Everyone is making their best to look at equity and diversity, and how is it that we can increase our inclusion? Want to give kudos to Kelseyville for always having a Cinco de Mayo celebration. It used to be in Lakeport before. They just had an Independence Day. And I know that those things are happening also in the city of Clear Lake. And we're seeing that change happening throughout our county. And that's because of the contributions that we are seeing from our Hispanic community and the recognition that we provide. Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to receive this proclamation?
I would.
All right.
I work for the Center for Latino.
Well, then, there it is. It's perfect.
Would you like to say anything?
Would you like to speak?
I was like, I have to think about it. I was like, I'm not really good at making speeches. I'm more of a talker that comes to the mind. But it is an honor to, you know, just to go closer. It is an honor to receive this proclamation, knowing that, you know, Hispanics have played a big and huge role in this community. And me being here, I've barely been here since, what, 2019? I've seen a lot of change. And I would love making those changes by working in the Center for the Latino Community. So thank you.
Thank you.
What's your name?
I thought you were here for the previous ones. I wasn't sure. Would you like to be in this picture?
Sure.
What's your name, for the record?
My name is Ricardo Arturo Ramos, and I work for the Center for Latino Communities for the Behavioral Health Services.
Any other comment from public input? I don't see any online, so I will go ahead and bring it back to the board and close this item. Move on to our 6.5, which is a presentation of the Lake County Pool and Recreation Center feasibility study, and this is presented by our Public Services Director, Lars Ewing. And so I will give the floor to you.
Hey. Good morning, Board. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. And I want to, before we get going, just make sure that we have on Zoom Brian Whitmore
They're coming in.
There they are. There's Brian. So while they are, while they are joining, I'll give a, just a brief introduction. So as the Board may recall, over the last few years, Public Services worked with a group of representatives from the cities of Clear Lake, the city of Lakeport, both of whom have representatives here in the Board today, as well as the Lakeport Unified School District and the County Office of Education, and to look at the possibility of a, of a pool for both recreational and competitive swimming purposes and possibly a recreation center or gym, to use a more common term, located somewhere in the county. Those, all of those entities have participated financially to one extent or another to have a feasibility study completed. About a year ago, your Board received a, an update on that. It was called the Phase One completion, and we are now at Phase Two, which will wrap up the feasibility study. So we'll, we'll give a presentation here, and the consultant team will, will give that presentation. But I think it's important to note that at the completion of Phase One, your Board's direction was to look at additional locations around the unincorporated county. That'll be highlighted during the presentation here. And, and while it is, you know, it's certainly not feasible to, to assess every single property in the entire county, the general approach to that was, was to ensure that consideration was given to areas located outside of those incorporated cities. And so I will hand it over to Brian Whitmore, who is, who is on. He was the, the architect that developed the, the facility program. Also presenting is Mike Shellato. Mike Shellato is a former Parks and Rec Director and City Manager with the City of Roseville, nearly 30 years of, of service there, I believe, at Roseville. He provided significant assistance on the operations and organizational structure side of things. And as we go into the, into the presentation and during the presentation, every presentation the Board receives, every item that is here, you know, there's, there's a request for direction to staff. And that's, I want to emphasize that here because the feasibility study is, is just that. It's a feasibility study to identify, is this feasible? There is no, there's no one answer to this. You'll, you'll hear recommendations from the consultant team of, of what they recommend. I included my recommendations in the agenda, which we will also get to at the end, but I, you know, I really am looking for, for, for direction from the Board. Any thoughts that, that may extend beyond those recommendations? Because this is, there's a lot of big numbers associated with this. That will stand out in the presentation and, and should not come as a surprise when we're, we're talking about, you know, big-picture facilities that are, that are not community-based. They're, they're regional, countywide, and even extending beyond that possibly. So, so with that framework, I'll, I'll hand it over to Brian. He'll, he'll lead you through the presentation, and, and Mike will comment as well.
Well, good morning, Brian Whitmore, President and CEO of Studio W Architects. Give me just a moment here to share my screen. And can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak here this morning. As Lars mentioned, we are going to be presenting the Phase Two Recreation Aquatic Center feasibility study here today. I want to just jump into our agenda. We're going to start today by talking about some other project location opportunities that we studied in Phase Two. We initially identified a number of locations in Phase One, but in Phase Two, we extended that through other areas of the county and have some thoughts and recommendations based on those sites that we analyzed. We also spent a bit of time with community outreach under Phase Two. We did conduct a community survey, which lasted approximately two months. We received roughly about 600 responses to that survey, and so we'll share results of that survey here that helped inform some of the recommendations that came out of Phase Two. Ultimately, the bulk of Phase Two was really focusing on developing some conceptual design ideas for multiple sites, really for the purposes to identify further the project possibility of scope and program, but also the costs associated with constructing these facilities, the capital cost estimates, and then the ongoing operational cost estimates, which Mike Shellato was instrumental in putting together. And then we'll have some final recommendations at the end. So if we go back to Phase One, you may recall that we studied a number of different sites. The first option there was the West Shore Swimming Pool Location in Lakeport. This was the previous pool location that was operated by the school district, the high school site there in Lakeport. We looked at a second option, which was a privately-run fitness center, Quail Run, in the Lakeport region. The third option, also in Lakeport, was the West Side Community Park Location, which is currently the regional park there. And then also the Clear Lake Burns Valley Park, which is a park that is currently being master-planned for the purposes of a regional park there in Clear Lake. In addition to those locations, we studied five other locations, and we had identified some pros and cons in each case. The first option here was Option Five. This is Middletown. This is a location right there off of Highway, Highway 29. Some of the pros, as you can see here, associated with this is that it is very proximate to the Middletown High School, Middle School, so there's some possible joint-use opportunity with either a recreation or aquatic center or both at this location. Obviously, high visibility on the main highway. Some of the cons that we identified were the fact that, you know, the county already operates a recreational pool in Middletown, and so there may be some competition, certainly by locating the aquatic center here, very proximate to the existing pool. It's currently not owned by any public entity, so there'd have to be some sort of acquiring of that property. And there's no apparent real adjacent community assets, that is, other nearby larger park types of uses, centers, or other kinds of things that we mentioned in Phase One have synergy with the development of recreation and aquatic centers in, in other locations. We also studied Option Number Six. This is an area off of Highway 20 identified there in Clear Lake Oaks. This, as we understand, is currently being considered for a regional park and part of a larger nature preserve. High visibility, again, on the highway there. I think some of the challenges with this site is, of course, it is currently an early process of donation, so there's probably, you know, a very long-term, ongoing process that needs to happen there in order to fully adopt and, and recognize that property is being owned publicly. There is currently no infrastructure to this site to support any sort of facility, so obviously you'd have to bring infrastructure to that, and that can be very costly when we're talking about sort of the first projects that start out the gate when it comes to trying to develop an area like this. Again, there's currently no adjacent community assets nearby, but certainly as this park would be master-planned, would be developed, there could be a lot of synergy that happened at this location, depending on what happens there. So while that is a bit of a con, it can be a pro later on as you move forward. We looked at an Option Number Seven, a Hammond Park. This is currently a, a community park off of Highway 20. It has little less visibility than some of the other comparable sites. This is a smaller site. It has less room to add recreation and aquatics amenities. The area to the west is primarily a wetlands area. Existing master plan may preclude those types of uses. I think you could certainly modify the master plan to include that, but I think the issue of size really becomes sort of a challenge. There's a little retail center there. There's some other amenities nearby. But certainly, when we consider locations for this, we want them to perform well, and so we're looking for some of the other things that they can utilize and serve, other retail centers for things like food, night stays, other types of things potentially if you're looking to attract folks regionally to come to these centers. Option Eight was in Upper Lake. This is another current community park location. There are some potential synergies with the local high school, the casino, and the retail center nearby. There is an underutilized, as we understand, softball field on this location that could be better utilized perhaps for, for other recreational and aquatics purposes. Again, a little less room to work on this site, and you'll see that when we get into some of the conceptual designs. There is, you know, a big requirement, obviously, for parking in addition to the, the sites themselves. And then adding, as we understand, there is the addition of a dog park and basketball court currently planned for this site that I think would probably take up what remaining room available that would be there. The, the last site we looked at was Kelseyville. The northern area of this site is relatively underutilized. Again, this is a, a smaller site. The ownership remains unknown. There were some questions about, you know, the ownership of sort of the northern portion of the site there. Again, I think in order to develop some sort of aquatics and/or recreation center here, you're really probably looking at trying to take up all of that property in order to do that, and so you're compromising some of the existing features of the park site as it, as it exists now. So these were the, these were the other sites that we had additionally looked at in Phase Two in addition to our Phase One research. In terms of recommendations, we came back to some of the early recommendations from Phase One, and that was really focusing on two locations. One in the Lakeport region and the other in the Clear Lake region, and the purposes for that was really the deciding factors there on the right-hand side. Again, we want these centers to do well. As you'll see, these are not inexpensive to construct and operate long-term, and so we want them to perform well. By having them in locations where we have a lot of population, a lot of potential use, the fact that there's a lot of synergies happening with the other community park amenities that are either being planned or already in place, the fact that you can share some amenities, things like parking, the co-location of things like libraries, the library, for example, Clear Lake is, is immediately adjacent to the Burns Valley Park, other centers, the schools, and potentially not, I'll say, cannibalizing the other pool location in Middletown seems to make a lot of sense. We really look for a lot of what we call those placemaking principles, other social activities, other things that happen, even access to the, to the highways, easy access to other places for food. Again, night stays, those types of things are really important when we look at the location and the ultimate success of these kinds of projects. And so hence the reason we sort of came back to and further studied that West Side Community Park and the Burns Valley Park locations. As I mentioned before, we issued a survey. That survey had approximately 20 questions or so. We published that survey for, I think, around 60 days. We received just short of 600 responses to the survey, which we felt was very positive. Big thanks to the cities and to the county and to the County Office of Education for helping to push that survey out through their own media and social media avenues. I'll go through some of the results here at a high level. We had roughly 99% of the folks who participated were actual Lake County residents. As you can see here, 82% were aged 35 or older, and 41% of those responding had some sort of households with youth, that is, children or grandchildren of some kind that lived at that home. We wanted to gauge the current recreational use, and as you can see here, 83% of the people who responded do engage in some sort of recreational uses throughout the county. The parks, the aquatics, assuming that's probably the Middletown Pool, hiking and walking and sports fields were, were the highest identified there, and we could go into, to more detail, but as you can see, 40% were really in the South Lake County area, 36% there in the city of Lakeport, and 18% in the city of Clear Lake. We asked questions specifically about recreational center priorities, and these were some of the things that were identified as either missing, desired, or most important. That included youth amenities, trails, paths, bike lanes, recreational center, bowling arcade, batting cage, mini golf, aquatics, gymnasium and fitness. Again, some of the desired amenities, you see some of the same things, fitness and aerobics, some sort of game room, gymnasium and training room. And most important included fitness and aerobics, adult sports and athletics, community events, and classes. With respect to an aquatic center, as you can see here, we asked some specific questions. 77% preferred the idea of some sort of combined aquatics and recreation type of facility, and 70% preferred the idea of an indoor facility with the ability to use an indoor facility essentially 12 months out of the year. Some of the desired amenities included swim lessons, adult swimming, family fun, and outdoor activities, and some of the most important amenities, again, included public swim and swim lessons. When it came to locations, 21% preferred one of what we considered the main Lake County cities, that being Lakeport or Clear Lake, and 74% were willing to travel more than 30 minutes. So you can see here the location preferences, 28% Lakeport, 23% Clear Lake, and then so forth. 74%, as I said before, were willing to go 15 to 30 minutes, and 16% 30 to 45 minutes to travel to either a rec center or aquatic center location. 95% said they were likely to visit. 58% said they were likely to visit weekly. Some of the visiting roadblocks could be location being too far, the cost being too expensive. Some of the priorities in construction were something that was safe and clean and sustainable. We asked the question about joint use and funding, and 86% said that they would like to support some sort of joint use, so that is some sort of sharing in the cost or sharing in the operation of this type of facility, and that they perhaps would consider tax measure, bond measure, impact fees, member fees, and so forth in that order in terms of how to fund a project of this kind. So in summary here, I think we did find there was overwhelming support that most people would frequent, frequent these sorts of facilities and travel up to 30 minutes at least to utilize these centers. A lot of the respondents noted that youth needed to be more of a consideration in these amenities that, to provide more access for the youth. The idea of a new aquatics facility was perhaps the most exciting, and while they were excited for the possibilities, again, they were concerned about location, cost, accessibility, and safety and security. So as I mentioned before, when we focused on each of the sites, we started to develop some conceptual designs, and this was really more of a proving ground. We developed a program, a high-level program in Phase One. We wanted to prove out that program to make sure that that was still relevant with some of the survey results that we received, and so we developed sort of a typical floor plan for a recreation center. This is approximately 15,000 square feet. It offers there in green a kind of a large gymnasium area with an 84-by-50 court, cross courts for basketball and for volleyball. There's a cardio and weights area. There's a game room area. There's an indoor sort of multi-use space that could be housed for classes, other types of events, pickleball, that sort of thing, and then a concessions and restrooms, excuse me, concessions area. Obviously, we have restrooms, locker rooms, changing rooms, and administrative areas and support areas along with that. We looked at the possibility of this idea of splitting up the facilities. There was a lot of sticker shock in Phase One about a combined facility. The city of Clear Lake has really made a push towards this idea of locating a rec center at the Burns Valley Park location, and so we wanted to see would that fit with some of the other amenities that they have planned, and so we put together a site plan that utilized the master plan that they currently have for Burns Valley that locates that center in the, in the central area of that site, adjacent to the library, and also adjacent to the major parking and a lot of the fields that they have planned. And again, we developed some exterior amenities, an outdoor area for special events, and a playground area as well, based on some of the survey results we received. And again, a lot of this was developed really as a concept to figure out the pricing associated with building a facility of this kind. Some renderings, really to show materials, the idea that we could look at some pre-manufactured elements for some of the larger pieces there, but coming up with something for a professional cost estimator to estimate too. By comparison to the recreational center, we looked at an aquatic center design. This design features roughly about a This design features roughly about an 8,000-square-foot facility with a pool deck area for two pools. This shows an eight-lane competitive pool. It's probably the, I'll say, worst-case scenario in terms of cost, in terms of the size of the facility. You could look at a six-lane, potentially even a four-lane facility, but the less size that we make that, obviously, the less opportunity for competition. And we worked with Aquatic Design Groups, who was another partner of ours, trying to identify and optimize the size that should be planned there. There's another small pool that would be more for learn-to-swim programs, younger youth-type programs, a bleachers area, and obviously the pool deck there. We looked at the ability to build this facility as both an indoor or an outdoor facility, so in effect, you could build a structure over those pools and make that an indoor pool facility if you wanted to, but it could also be planned as an outdoor facility. The building includes administration, changing rooms, locker rooms, a party room, or professional development type of space, and then an area for storage of equipment as well as the chemicals associated with the pool. We looked at, in this particular case, the idea that if Clear Lake is pursuing a recreation center, what about the idea of a potential aquatic center in Lakeport with the idea that a rec center could be built there later on in the future? We looked at sort of the area there furthest west in the West Side Park location that seemed to have the most room to build a facility of this kind and have utilities already at the location. So we planned that along with the rest of the master plan for the West Side Park. This shows the aquatic center there on the right-hand side with the idea that a future recreational center could be planned there in the future. And some of the renderings, these renderings do show a pre-manufactured system that could cover the pool, but again, that could be phased in construction. The idea that the pool facility would feature solar hot water and other cost savings measures when it comes to operating that pool long-term by utilizing the roofs. And some further renderings of the aquatic center space. So when it came to the estimates, we took conceptual designs that we had, we shared those with a professional cost estimator. These are the high-level estimates that they provided. This includes a lot of contingency and some escalation. Certainly, we have no idea what the planned timeframe is, and so it's hard to estimate escalation, but we know costs continue to go up in terms of construction. Up there at the top is the recreation center building at about 15,000 square feet, including its site and utilities. So it's about a $12.9 million project. If we look at the possibility of certainly building that with both field act compliance for the purposes of use by local school districts, but also with prevailing wages. Soft-cost budgets typically, these are all of the ancillary costs of design permitting and those sorts of things that go along with construction costs, roughly about 25%. It's about a $16 million facility, potentially, when we look at something around 15,000 square feet when it comes to this type of construction. By comparison, the aquatic center, we separated sort of that glass shell from the aquatics pool and building and its site and utilities. So it's about a $20.9 million facility enclosed and maybe closer to around $12 million, $12.5 million facility as an outdoor facility plus soft costs at about 25%. I'm going to turn things over to Mike Schelto. As I mentioned before, the capital costs are one thing, but in order to maintain these facilities, there are costs that are ongoing. We talked a little bit about some of the optimized cost recovery that we would want to look at of these types of facilities, but Mike did a deep dive when it came to trying to figure out the cost to operate and obviously the revenue that these sorts of centers could generate. So Mike.
Thanks, Brian. In developing the operational cost estimates for the rec center, we looked at, and the pool, we looked at two existing facilities that have been operating for about 10 years. Both of them were based in Roseville, where back earlier in my career, I was involved with both planning and building those facilities. So the recreation center, we're looking at an operation budget of, for annual revenue around a quarter million dollars to offset the operating cost. The center operating cost itself, salaries make up the bulk of that at $400,000, materials and supplies, less than $200,000. So total annual operating costs, you know, combined are around $585,000. If you separate that or subtract the revenue that you get from classes, drop-in, membership fees, both of these facilities are operated to maximize cost recovery. So from membership fees to classes to youth sport leagues, basketball, adult leagues, volleyball rentals, the facility gets rented a lot, it's used for crab feeds, all of those kinds of things. So you can see a net operational subsidy. Annual visits to the current Roseville Sports Center is around 85,000 visitors a year, and so you sort of divide that, 340,000 is about four bucks a visit. I would note that the current proposal that Brian just outlined for the rec center is 15,000 square feet. The Roseville Sports Center is around 26,000. So I think this is a worst-case scenario in terms of operating cost, but I think it's, these are really hard actual numbers. And so the next slide, I won't go into the detail, but these are, this is the actual budget that currently is used to fund the operation of the existing facility. So I think this, again, it's a larger facility currently than being proposed, so you may see lower costs in terms of utilities as well as custodial, those kinds of things. But a lot of the costs are just the staffing that goes into front desk, operation, leagues, programs, fitness programs, staffing that goes with those things. So this is the basis of the operating cost was the actual budget. Again, I would expect it to be lower because it was a smaller facility, but I'd rather err on the high side than the low side. When we look at the pool costs, we looked at the current operating costs. Brian, can you move me forward one? There we go. Looked at the indoor pool costs of the indoor pool, and we visited this pool in the latter part of May with a group from Lakeport, Clear Lake, and Lake County. So this is the current budget for that facility, so you can see it gets a lot of use from recreation swim, around 85,000 revenue. Fitness passes and drop-in is a bulk of the revenue that offsets the operating cost with about 46,000 people visiting annually. Lesson program, they teach, there's 6,500 kids registered, 52,000 visits. Rentals, team use, community use, another 85,000 miscellaneous, so annual revenue at 675,000. Currently, the salaries include both full and part-time, and in developing the budget for the facility in Lakeport, Lake County, we looked at probably one full-time aquatic supervisor and a half-time maintenance person that would be a full-time employee. The rest of the salaries are temporary, part-time, hourly folks, lifeguards, swim instructors, cashiers, custodial help, materials and supplies, about 357,000. So total annual operating cost, a little bit, about a million dollars. Again, this is an eight-lane pool with a large teaching pool and water exercise pool. If you went to, let's say, a six-lane pool that would still be appropriate for competitive swimming, these costs would certainly go down. The net operational subsidy is around 380,000, or a cost recovery at 64%. In developing the revenue, we looked at pricing models that were competitive in the market in the region, so the pricing is intended to be, was included in a more detailed report that we provided to the jurisdictions. So the next slide is just the breakdown of the operating costs based on the current budget of the facility that you see in the picture in the lower half left, which is the pool that's currently being operated. Again, you can see the operational breadth, sort of indoor/outdoor, but again, not to go into all these details, but you can see the bulk of the cost really relates to staffing, and most of that staffing is temporary, part-time. And then there on the right side is the material and operating costs, including utilities. Lastly, we looked at, well, if you, let's say you built an outdoor pool, not a year-round, 12-month-a-year operation, but an outdoor pool, which is fairly typical in a lot of communities, and this pool would more often than not run from, let's say, Memorial Day to the start of school, which today becomes sort of mid-August in sort of the Lake County area. You can see the cost and revenue are significantly lower, so you have total revenue around $100,000 based on community use. A big portion of that would be swim team rent. A group like the Channel Cats might rent the pool during the recreational swim team season. This does not include use or rent offset by the Lakeport School District. So if they decided to restart a competitive swimming program, that would both add some revenue and rent revenue from the school district as well as, may include a little bit of additional operating cost for heat during the high school swim season. Salary costs around 350,000, so the net operational subsidy is around 250,000 a year. And again, this budget was drawn from one of the facilities we looked at in our tour, the Antelope High School, Antelope Community Park Joint Use Facility that's run by the Sunrise Recreation Park District and the Roseville High School District. So again, these were sort of real numbers from very benchmarked facilities. And with that, I turn it back to Brian to kind of wrap things up.
And so we wanted to just go through some high-level recommendations that, based on information we collected both in Phase One and Phase Two. If you recall, in Phase One, we had a number of different structures that we identified and used case studies when it came to how might the county and/or the cities come together and operate facilities of these kinds. We presented the pros and cons of sort of joint use versus joint powers authority versus special district, and it seemed to us that Lake County, the city of Lakeport, the city of Clear Lake, I think all have a vested interest in doing something. A joint use is challenging because one entity would have to really be the developer and then work to try to bring the others in as partners, either in operations or in other ways. And that works well when cities partner with, say, Unified School Districts, things of that nature, but because we saw this really as a joint development, it probably makes more sense to look at it from a joint powers authority standpoint. In other words, could be the county, the city of Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake coming together, it could be multiple JPAs, say, the city of Lakeport and Lake County along with the school district in that region, and then likewise, Clear Lake and Lake County and the school district in that region, if you were to look at either multiple facilities or differing facilities, such as rec center in one location, aquatic center in the other. We did consider the idea of a special district. Generally speaking, special districts do not operate just one or two facilities, they operate multitude of facilities. They generally exist in areas where currently counties and/or cities don't operate their own parks and recreation facilities. And so if there was consideration for a special district, which certainly there could be, I think we would want to look at probably getting out of the business of Parks and Recs for the county and for the cities and having those current parks or other facilities being maintained and operated by that special district. And we also recognize that that is not necessarily an easy task to put together a special district. There is a lot of effort there in order to make that into its own entity, and then depending on whether it's simply just focused on these facilities or absorbing other facilities within the county as part of Parks and Rec, that that would take some time. When it comes to funding, we really didn't go through the process of trying to identify commitments either from the county or from the cities. There are a variety of commitments that have already been identified. Lakeport Unified, for example, has said they are willing to put forth $1.2 million in terms of their own funds from their bond measure towards something. We know the city of Clear Lake has some funds in place already and is looking at utilizing partnership funds with their local school district to move forward on the idea of a rec center. Potentially, the county and the cities and even the school districts all have some sort of funding they're willing to put forth, but if there isn't enough funds there to do that sort of thing, really, the only option, or probably the most likely option, is some sort of bond measure. Recognizing that if even a special district or if the county and/or the cities came together as a JPA, that that's going to be a supermajority support, so 67% support, and that might be a challenge. School district can pass a bond with 55%, but as we've seen in the past, there have been some challenges about the commitment of whether or not school district can pass another bond, the idea of supporting facilities that may be ultimately in partnership with either the county or the cities, and so that's something to consider. The ongoing costs, so all of the sort of maintenance and operations costs, that may be 250,000 to 350,000 per year, would have to be something that's likely going to be shared through a general fund subsidy. But again, if you come together with enough partners and a JPA, that general fund subsidy could be something that's divvied up three or four times. Phasing makes a lot of sense. We sort of looked at, again, the worst-case scenario when it came to the design. It's not to say that you can't build something that's smaller or less costly when it comes to the type of amenities, a smaller pool, a smaller rec center, but the idea of phasing that construction, perhaps building an aquatic center that's not enclosed, but the ability to enclose it later makes a lot of sense. Building, say, maybe a small rec center where you can add on other amenities around the perimeter of a main space, a main gymnasium and locker room, an administration space may make sense as well. So these are some of the high-level recommendations that we made, and I'm sure you have some questions, and we'll be happy to answer your questions here this morning. So with that, I'll hand it back to them.
Brian, thank you. I appreciate that, and I want to just add a few comments to wrap it up. First, thank you to the cities. Two city managers are here in the chambers right now, also Office of Education, the consultant team, and also the number of elected officials that participated, so thank you for that. Similar presentations like this were given to the city of Clear Lake, the city of Lakeport over the last couple of weeks, and that's beneficial, really, having this culminating presentation to the board as where we are now. The recommendations that were put up by the consultant team, I'll contrast those with some of the recommendations that you'll see in my board memo, because there are some slight differences. And ultimately, it's, I think, from what, where are they looking at? Where are we each looking at this project? The consultant team is looking at it from countywide, you know, how can these projects get done? My recommendations are more coming from what specifically should the county of Lake? Or are my recommendations from public services to the county board of supervisors as possibly carrying these projects forward in partnership with other entities? So while those recommendations that were just presented now may look different, that's why, and I think it's important to note that. And so just jumping into those recommendations, the recommendations that I put forward were essentially, let's continue to investigate in a partnership fashion with the two cities based on the recommendations of the locations, that each of those two cities taking the onus to lead those projects and having the county partner with them in whatever fashion that might look like. And I use the term in the memo, joint powers agreement, you know, different from a joint powers authority, and when we talk about the development, you know, and I'll say development, meaning, do we need this project? How, maybe getting some polling done, additional polling above and beyond a feasibility level survey, you know, some preliminary design. So does that merit a joint powers authority? You know, I personally would argue no, but possibly something a little bit more than a handshake agreement between the entities. So moving ahead with some fashion on that end. Otherwise, you know, I think the recommendations that I have are very self-explanatory, but I do want to highlight specifically for the pool, and I'm using the term pool. I recognize aquatic center is up there. I think we, you know, garbage workers are now sanitary engineers, you know, and aquatic center is a pool. So, you know, we used to have, you know, just here in Lakeport, there used to be the school pool, there was reference there. There used to be a pool down in Library Park, right? So there's a history of just recreational pools. The competitive pool component of this really was part of the genesis of this project really from Channel Cats driving it, so that's why we are looking at a larger-sized pool. But that polling that I referenced will really indicate what the need is in a little bit more solidified fashion than we've done now at a feasibility level. bit more solidified fashion than we've done now at a feasibility level. You know, I don't want to take a "if you build it, they will come" approach, you know. Will they come if we build it? That's, you know, we want to look at it from that perspective. So with that said, you know, an opportunity to turn it over to the board, and I welcome and encourage any questions and direction from the board. So thank you.
Anybody? Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the numbers. I do want to thank Mr. Whitmore and Mr. Shalito, hopefully I said the names correctly, for the field trip that we took when we came down to Citrus Heights and Roseville and that whole area to visit quite a different centers. I do want to say that a part of me, when I'm looking at the operational cost, I can't help, but I just looked it up, that there's a doubling of household income when we're looking at other facilities, like facilities in that region that we went to visit versus here. Do we have that same amount of disposable income to be able to kind of meet where those numbers were for those other facilities? So that one I kind of take with a grain of salt, with hopes that we can slowly grow year by year with use, so it can become a little bit more sustainable and reach that same percentage possibly as we were seeing over there, because none of them were 100% as was just suggested in the operational cost. They were all, still needed some subsidizing to make it work. Love the idea of working together. We have three jurisdictions. We should be working together to make these things happen. This will have a very large impact on our youth, which I know that a survey is really hard to go after our youth, but having a survey where the majority of the people do not have kids and are older kind of skews maybe what our thoughts and purpose were for this, which was really aimed at youth. Also, the percentages that I saw that caught my interest was that 51% of the respondents were from the City of Clear Lake and the City of Lakeport, and 51% of the respondents wanted it to be in the City of Clear Lake or the City of Lakeport, which tells me potentially that none of the respondents outside of the city wanted it to be in the City of Clear Lake or the City of Lakeport. And what I'm hearing is our conversation is really circling around the projects for the City of Clear Lake and the City of Lakeport. I would love to hear about possibly, maybe not a Phase 1 for when we're looking at getting these things built and developed and moving forward, but maybe a Phase 2, or if it's possible to implement it in Phase 1. But what are we doing for the unincorporated area that obviously spoke out loud and clear that they would love to see it in the unincorporated area? I think having a regional draw is useful, both from an aquatic center to a rec center as well. But I want to make sure that there's equity built into what we're doing here and that we're not forgetting to recognize that transportation still has not been resolved in our county where everyone can access everything. It's very limited for a lot of people. And so making sure that we make whatever we're going to develop be accessible to the majority amount of people, I think, is going to be really important for me to feel good about moving forward. As far as how to move forward, how to get it funded and all that, I think there's a lot of good options, but I do know that I'm always kind of looking at the worst-case scenario, sorry Fort Bragg, but where they had to pass a tax measure after the fact in order to keep their facility open. And I think that that is something that we just need to keep thinking about, that maybe we need to do that first rather than reactively realizing that it's not going to work and we can't maintain it. We need these things to stay open. We need these things to be well-maintained, and they do come at a cost. And so I'm looking forward to what that's going to look like, but I think we need to work together on it. I do have some questions about the, and when I say around the lake, I'm not looking personally for swim meet competition all around the lake type of facilities. That would be weird. I think that having a singular one is good. Having other smaller, I love the Middletown Pool, been taking my kids there for the last seven, eight years, well, maybe not now that they're older, but was taking my kids down there. It's a perfect pool for just a family outing and enjoying to go take a dip, especially when it's hot. So that's the kind of things that I would like to see us looking at for other areas throughout the lake, and granted, wherever it fits and wherever it can work, and maybe getting a little bit more specific feedback from the community as to what their wants and needs are. But when it comes to the swim thing, again, in the survey, it wasn't, the swimming competition was not the highest of levels, and it's a huge price tag of what we're looking to build for something that wasn't at the top priority or top interest of the community. I think there's good reasons to do it, but my question is, right now, we just said that the school district is willing to give $1.2 million. I appreciate them doing that, as they had a chance to resolve some of their pool issues. So obviously, them participating in this, I think, is a huge, it's a huge thing. It's appreciated that that's what they're willing to do. What happens with the old pool, the old high school pool? And what about Quail Run? Is that a pool that is currently open and available to the public at this moment? So I guess my question is, what is going on with Westside Pool? Is that the one that you suggested?
Westshore.
Westshore Pool? Quail Run was on the list. Is that a pool that is open and available right now, or is it kind of like a gym membership type of thing? And just kind of wondering where that $1.2 million, because $26 million is a lot, and even if you take off the roof, it's still a lot. I want to make sure that we can achieve our goals and make sure that there is an opportunity for our swim teams to have access. But does it require us to carry that hefty price tag versus maybe resolving current issues with current pools that are available to us?
Okay. Well, if I can respond to, well, the parts that I can respond to. The Quail Run, privately-owned facility that is, was operated on both a membership and a drop-in basis, and it's my understanding that now they operate on a membership only. There are no drop-ins. So that's a significant difference to the public at large on any daily, any given day. You know, there's not that ability there. The Westshore Pool, while the county's not involved with that at this point and hasn't been for quite some time, so I think I'll have to defer to the City of Lakeport and the Lakeport Unified School District. It has been, if I'm hearing him walking up, that's great. So I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Kevin, if you can answer that. Thank you.
Yes, Kevin Ingram, City Manager with the City of Lakeport. Good morning, honorable board members. Just in regards to the Westshore Pool, I mean, working with the school district there, there's a number of issues in regards to the physical condition of the pool. Essentially, there's, it doesn't hold water. There's a major leak below the surface. That combined with, you know, getting the facility to meet ADA standards and the state architec DSA standards, really, at this point, it would be more cost-effective to build an entire new facility than it would be to rehab that existing facility, which is unfortunate. I mean, that was a very disappointing answer for all parties involved in that piece, and I think that's kind of what was taken into account. So if we're looking at this study in particular, you know, the good news is it gives us options. That site is challenging for access to begin with, that, you know, if we can, look at different sites, but unfortunately, you know, rehabbing that facility, it would be more cost-effective to construct a new one.
And Supervisor Sabatier, just to follow up a little bit on the costs, certainly, when we talk about the pool or really the way it was presented, the aquatic center, you know, a full eight lane and the secondary waiting pool and all the other amenities that are there. It's presented in a way that it could be phased, number one, so we do have that opportunity. But we also have a chance at this point, we haven't even started engineering, so now's a good time to value engineer out and economize and scale a project. What is, what truly is the community need? We're basing this largely off a desire to provide a competitive swimming pool, but when we do some more significant polling, then maybe that isn't identified as a need. Or can we provide that in a training capacity while not providing the location to try to draw in from all of Northern California hosting swim meets, right? What is the need that we can attempt to meet? So those, you know, the numbers that were up there, certainly, we could provide an opportunity to economize a bit.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pyska?
I think there's a clear need for this aquatic center, for both centers. Our, you know, looking at our health metrics, we have to go up, and this is one way to get a lot of our community members engaged in physical activity and addressing some, you know, whole healthcare habits. I do, you know, we have a population that may not be able to afford daily passes or memberships, and so how do we make sure that we can accommodate a larger sector of our community to make sure that everyone or a lot of people can use these facilities and, you know, and not have that membership be a barrier?
Well, you know, if Mike Shalito has an opportunity to comment, I'm going to welcome his input here, because it's my understanding that, you know, most rec centers and pools publicly operated are not 100% self-funded. There is a subsidy that comes in generally, and, you know, any level of desire to keep rates down certainly could come from that increased subsidy. So that's the thing that comes to mind, just from my mind, but with Mike, your background, I'd welcome any comments you have. Mike, you're on mute.
I think that's a good question. Brian, if you could, I'm looking at everybody in a little teeny window. And I think the model of both public recreation centers and public pools, you know, it's very rare that a recreation center or a pool operates at a 100% cost recovery. And I, but I do think there are opportunities, so even though the demographics or the median income may be different from community to community, I think, you know, whoever the operator is needs to make accommodations for people that have difficulty in affording things. And so in a couple of examples of those things, you know, number cities do scholarship programs. Roseville has this thing called Operation Swim that teaches, has sponsorships for several hundred kids a year to get free swimming lessons, some things like that, as well as reduced rates for people that have some income challenges. And so those are for sort of public policy issues. All of the, both of these facilities are not a membership, solely membership-based. Some of those things are daily fee, if you want to drop in, let's say, and use the fitness equipment at the rec center or a daily fee to use a pool. I think the pricing model that we looked at, around $5, but depending on the jurisdiction, you could certainly develop both scholarships or reduced rate policies for lower-income families. That's a very typical thing that I think I would suggest that people do, because those are ways that you can manage that. So I think there's ways to make it more affordable for those who have income challenges, as well as community programs that sponsor things, you know. But again, part of this is to try to design for the, to, as best you can, maximize cost recovery without eliminating participation.
Mike, thank you. One other piece to that, too, is in Middletown. I think it's an opportunity right now to thank Hardesters. You know, they, the daily rate there is $2, and Hardesters offers a discount, buy it there at their store and for local, for the kids, and it's $1.25. And that difference is entirely paid by Hardesters. So essentially, local businesses can also be a partnership here.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. I was going to bring that up, too. So I swim almost every day in the summer. My family does. We go to three different pools. So I, you know, this is a critical need that I understand. And going to the competition swimming, you know, we have our Channel Cats program, which has been around for over 50 years, I think, and they don't have a place to swim, and there's no way to keep that program going if there's no pool for them to be in. And right now, they're using a really old pool that is really cold and swimming at 8:00 at night in the summer, in the end of the summer, that starts to get cold and dark. So if we want to keep programs like that going and keep our youth engaged in swimming and competitive swimming, we have to have the facility. But it's not just kids that swim laps. The pool that I'm a member of, I can see it across the street from me, I, even to, well, maybe not this morning, but even into October, there are people that come every morning at 8:00, do their laps, do their water aerobics, and through the afternoon. So it's not just the youth, but I'm wondering if the timing of this survey has something to do with it, because at the time of the survey, I think the Channel Cats was using Quail Run, and they're not allowed to use Quail Run anymore. They're not, that's not an option. So that's really unfortunate, but that may have led to some of the, maybe the polling results would be different now just because of that. I am concerned about the sustainability of the program, and I think looking at the bond measure and looking how this is going to be community-supported before we start making really big commitments, because I don't want to be in the places that Fort Bragg was in. And, I'm so sorry. So, yeah, so, you know, without having that long-term sustainability plan locked in or at least a lot more solidified, I'd be hesitant to start throwing money at this. But I do, I know these numbers are big, but I think they're important, and I think we should move forward and continue with the investigation. As far as the outdoor pool goes, I think we can have three seasons rather than just one season. I think we can open in April and close in October, November. We do have that warm weather, particularly in Clear Lake and Lakeport, to have three seasons, and I think that'll work better with the school district, and I think we'll have a lot more community people using the pool in those times. It's not just about kids and families and summer vacation. So phasing with the roof is a great idea. With the roof, I think in the wintertime, we would have more senior activities there, and mommy-and-me programs and daddy-and-me programs, and I think we would see, I think we would see a lot of use in the wintertime, but it's something that we could definitely phase into. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you for those. Supervisor Simon, you have anything?
Yeah, you know, supportive of the concept and the projects, as we're talking about it, as, you know, Supervisor Pyska talked about, changing the health matrix in Lake County is something we're all looking to do. I see the great work that, you know, obviously, both cities are doing with the improvement of parks, recreation areas, also the community development stuff that's happening down in Burns Valley. You know, I think it all ties together of us really taking that next generation of, you know, healthy living in Lake County. So in support, but understanding the costs as we move forward is really the challenge right now, because great concept, but understanding how we're going to subsidize it and help it move forward, because it's already been stated clearly that it can't stand alone on its own, and that makes it the real challenge for us up here. You know, great community idea, but how do we work through that? Obviously, joint powers authority, I can just speak that it is a challenge to get set up, but once it gets going and you get everybody's buy-in, it can work. The Lake County Risk Reduction Authority being a part of that. We're still developing it, but it does take time. But that conversation is happening, funding, how we do that. So we're kind of experiencing that right now. I would appreciate that conversation to be a little bit more on the bond measure or how we make sure that it's funded, because as all agencies do, you know, they're going to either be looking to the county or the cities to pick this stuff up. Out of the general fund has already been talked about, and we already know the challenges that we have with that. Having it all year round, if we're going to build something, needs to be the main focus from my point of view. Can't start out with just two seasons or three seasons. It would need to be all year round so we could maximize any type of profits or, you know, from that standpoint. Can't have an on-season, off-season. It would need to be all year round, is in some of the conversations we're having. I appreciate the way we went around the entire county and looked at it, the unincorporated areas. I know we're not looking for a decision today, but one of the things that always comes to this board is the North Shore, and the communities up that way, and having a community event or opportunity in that area to really help focus on our older demographics and, you know, lower-income folks in that area. So I, you know, myself, I like the North Shore idea, because now we are, as we've always sat here and talked about, you know, bringing some new lifeblood to that area that's in a different a different manner. I know we've talked about economic development in certain ways, but I think this community development opportunity is another way to do it. You know, folks traveling from all around the county to the North Shore, you know, through Highway 20 and other things to understand that, you know, that community and how it exists here in Lake County and the uniqueness of it. So, you know, those are my thoughts. And I know you weren't asking for an area, but it just seems like it has some good synergy there in, what's the name of the park? Is it?
The Upper Lake?
Yeah, the Upper Lake Park, right by Running Creek there. Is that Hammond?
It's Upper Lake Park.
Upper Lake Park, okay. You know, I just, and it's right off the highway. You know, those are my thoughts at this point.
I don't know if you're reading my mind, but go ahead, Supervisor Simon.
One final comment, too. I think, you know, potentially another jurisdiction or opportunity we could reach out to would be as we're doing it, you know, tribal health. Tribal health is, you know, obviously built a new facility in South Lake County, which is beautiful. You know, we're glad to have that opportunity, but I think from the tribal communities also, tribal health might be another organization that we, at least approach, look at this idea as we're looking at, you know, the complete health of all residents in Lake County could be an opportunity down the road, too.
Great, thank you.
Not to mention that tribal health does serve greater than just the tribal community. They serve the full county. So I'm glad that you said that. I did appreciate in the presentation how they stated that that softball field is somewhat underutilized, and I know that now with the Nice Field, that's a little more up to date. So, you know, of course, I know that we talked also yesterday about some, some ideas on that, like in regards to special districts or something like that, special district or something like that. So, yeah, I do appreciate the statement that we really do need to focus on having this planned rather than the Fort Bragg situation. So I, I'm on the same page there. And so a joint powers authority is, like Moke said, it works, and I'm in favor of that as well, so.
Okay. Well, what I'm generally hearing and just to add to the opportunities to continue, for staff to continue working with not only the two cities, but any other, any other agencies that might be interested. And I think it can be done under the just about to start countywide Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan. So that's going to be about a year and a half effort, a year and a half long effort. And we have an opportunity there during some very significant community outreach events to include this, this concept in that plan. That, you know, the intent there is to, is to have a master plan for our countywide facilities and, you know, this, both existing and potentially future facilities. So what I would suggest is that staff through public services continue to partner with any, well, with the city of Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake. You know, I'll just say in a loose fashion at this point until we, we need to get to a point where we need some more heavy-hitting action. But I, through that master plan, the Countywide Parks, Trails Master Plan, that's what I would recommend to the board is that we, we include the continuation of this through that effort.
Supervisor Spocky?
And I will just make kind of an opposite statement. The price tag, I'm not worried about. I think that that's actually a motivation to go out there and find the funding. Knowing what we want is number one, and then number two, there's a lot of opportunities out there. It's not like we're going to lose services so we can go ahead and develop this. No, we're going to work so that we can find the funding that's available, and it's going to be possible to make it happen, which is why, and I'm in complete agreement with Supervisor Simon, making sure, again, the equity of where is the access to these types of facilities, that adds to the price tag. And I'm not even worried about that either. I think that we can make these things happen. People want to have access to these things. It's, it's an attraction for people who want to move here to look to see if those facilities are available. I think there's, there's more benefits than there is cons. In fact, I don't see any cons other than the fact that the price tag can look scary, but we can make that happen. And I think that we should make it happen.
Well, yeah, and I agree. Just, I think finding the money to build the facility is not the problem. It's just the sustainability of how we keep the operations going.
Right. And that's why I mentioned the equity piece because I think it will be probably coming up to a vote to say, hey, do you want to support this in order to continue it? And if we don't have equity, then a lot of people are going to say, well, what do I get out of this? And I think that makes it a lot easier to sell if we are offering to more people than just specifically to the two cities.
Okay. And on the equity piece here, are we talking geographic?
That's what I've been thinking. And of course, with the idea of keeping the price as low as we can to make it accessible, but it's not possible to offer something like that for free.
Ms. Grant, did you have something?
The only thing I would like to do is just make a recommendation. If you're looking at a joint powers authority, as Supervisor Simon knows full well with the RRA, that's a lengthy process. And in the meantime, there's going to have to be a member of that joint powers authority who's going to be having to generally staff it, keep track of things, the reports, audits, et cetera. So as you're having those discussions, I very much recommend that you factor that in so that there's some equity among the members as to who has the maybe shared laboring ore for all of that.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Simon, I had?
Yeah, great points, Anita. You know, like I said, here at the county level, I've had a little bit of experience both with, obviously, the JPA for the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, but also were a part of a JPA called the Workforce Alliance in North Bay that went through the transition, just as Anita was talking about, that went from a supportive, Napa was the main supportive county with the administrative, administrative costs and covering those, but we did do a separation just two years ago and brought on our own, you know, employees, you know, executive director, Mr. Bruce Wilson and other things. So it is, there's a big transition, a lot of work that needs to go into that. So I think the conversations are moving in the right direction. When we talk about equity and inclusion as we're doing this, I do see this as a great opportunity in Lake County's time now as far as the recreation center and the aquatic center or the pool. As we move through that, to be a unique opportunity, you know, we talk about transportation and other things. We're, you know, we're preparing to build a beautiful transit hub down in Clear Lake, but through LTA and APC, I think there could be opportunities there to look at our low-income to get people to this property. We have the Blue Zones going on in Lake County. We have all those conversations about how do we gather folks, seniors and others in a certain area? And I think this continues that conversation because we know that isolation of our elders and our seniors is very concerning. And we currently have the senior centers, and I know we work hard through LTA to make sure that a lot of the places that things are hit, certain trips are tried to get people out to be in community and to be together. So I think this does continue that conversation. That's why I think it's very important that we do continue to go down this road to look at that opportunity because, as we all know, like I said, getting folks out of the house, getting into the community, finding a place that they can go and just, you know, be together for a while to get that human contact is very important. So, you know, that's why I'm in support of this. I think it is good, always thinking of the youth, but also of our elders, you know, being isolated. That's, that's a real challenge.
All right. Great, well, thank you.
So what I'll do is I'll open it up to public comment. I'm going to start with Zoom because I see, since we're speaking of the youth, the Sea at Clear Lake High School students has their hands up. If you'd like to mute and state your name for the record, whoever's speaking, and we'll give you three minutes.
Can you guys hear us? We don't know how to turn the camera on.
Okay. Well, either way, if you just want to speak, that's fine, and.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Grace Gomez. I am here with Emma Hawk and Nancy Rezika. We are students from Clear Lake High and a part of the All Children Thrive Organization. We are really hoping to gain a safe place such as a rec center, and we hope to be given the opportunity to support this project. We really hope you take into consideration the positive outcomes that will result from the recreation center while also taking in the agreeable input from Mr. Sabatier. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here today. That's all we got.
Thank you very much. All right. Any more hands in Zoom? I don't see any. So what I'll do is open it up in the chambers, and it looks like we have someone. If you can come to the microphone, state your name for the record, then we'll start your three minutes. And if you're asking a series of questions, can we just go through them first and then we'll answer them afterwards?
Joan Moss, I am a lifeguard. I've guarded at a couple of lake pools up on Cobb. I lifeguarded in Lakeport. I lifeguarded almost everywhere locally. I want to ask, I appreciate Lars, I've lifeguarded for Lake County at the, at the pool there. I want to ask the committee if they've considered ConocoDye Harbor Inn. I worked there a few years. There's two big pools, two baby, at least one baby pool, and there's facilities that serve meals, and I want to know if anybody considered ConocoDye Harbor Inn. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
It's a private resort, Joan, so it wouldn't function for the public.
Lars, do you concur with that?
Absolutely. I would, I would second what Supervisor Price indicated. It was not included in the feasibility study and analysis of other areas. And I think as I indicated in my introductory remarks, you know, it's nearly impossible to look at every single parcel in the county and the possibilities there. It was more about, for a little bit more clarity, I did reach out to each of the supervisors to look at areas in their district that might make sense. This goes back probably a year now, but, but we did look at, at areas that would seemingly make sense. But, but no, to pointedly answer the question, no, the ConocoDye Harbor was not looked at.
All right. And so Joan, did you hear the, that it's a privately owned facility and it's very similar to the Quail Run situation where they, they have the preference to serve if so and if not? So, so we'll leave it at that. Is there any other public comment?
Good morning, Chair Crandall, board members, Allen Floris, City Manager, City of Clear Lake. Just want to thank the board for voicing your support for these projects. We believe that, you know, this is something that our community really desperately needs. Not only, we talk about physical health, which is a huge issue, but I think some of the behavioral health issues in our community. I would argue that these type of facilities will impact crime rates countywide, the quality of education. You know, this is something that, the project at Burns Valley, we started out planning on developing just a sports complex there, and it was really in our discussions with the school district and ConocoDye Unified Superintendent really pushing us that we have a desperate need for after-school programs and things for kids to do after school in a safe environment, as you heard earlier from Clear Lake High School students, that pushed us towards looking at additionally developing a recreation center at the site that we have in Burns Valley. So just want to say appreciate your continued support. We look forward to working with you. We started down a path a little bit ahead of when this initiative started. And so over the last year, we have put together $8 million of funding for the sports complex portion of our project. The city's already invested a little over $3.5 million in the site thus far. So we're excited about continuing that, and we're looking at the rec center piece kind of being hopefully a second phase of that. And we'll be starting to put together some funding on that. So appreciate your comments, your support, and hopefully if I could be so bold, maybe this is something you could think about over the next couple of days with unprecedented general fund fund balance that you'll be talking about.
Thank you. And so, yep, it looks like we have.
We've had, everything's frozen. I'm not sure what's happening.
They're not frozen.
So do you want to take a quick break?
They're moving.
I think Mike and Brian were just not moving.
Oh, we're moving, right? Yeah, I see my hand.
Yeah, they're moving.
It's just those cameras? Oh, there they are. There they go. Okay. Kevin, I see you coming up. Come on up.
Kevin Ingram again, City of Lakeport, City Manager. I think what's been said by all members of your, your board staff today, I mean, I think, you know, echoed by our city council that, you know, the, the price tag itself may, you know, seem a little daunting at, at its first glance, but I think there's overwhelmingly a desire in the community and a direction given to us to continue to keep moving this forward. And I think the best, the best mechanism for that is continuing the partnership, the conversations. I know Lars has his master plan process. I think that's a wonderful opportunity to continue the conversation. I also, I hear exactly what Anita is saying, that, you know, the JPA comes with quite a bit of, you know, extra bureaucracy per se, and maybe that is a direction that we need to go some point in the future. But I think, you know, even something as informal as an ad hoc, you know, something a little bit greater than just a handshake agreement, I think, which was brought up before, but to continue this on the path to do exactly what it said. I, I too share the same sentiment. Not that finding up to $40 million is an easy task, but I do believe that is something that is easier than the, the sustainability in the long run. I don't think we want to, to follow the footpaths that Fort Bragg did. They recovered well. It's a, it's a fine facility that continues to operate, but we have an opportunity to learn from those mistakes. But at the same time, you know, we hear quite a bit, we heard from the Clear Lake High School Youth Council Group, who have been very active in participating with our city council and drilling in over and over again, that the desire and the need for greater youth activities in our community is a huge need. And, and this is, this is by far, always rises to the top of that list. So I think we definitely have our charge to continue this partnership. The City of Lakeport is definitely wanting to be on that. We can certainly, you know, dedicate staff and council members to that continued discussion. So I think whatever, whatever format that discussion tends to be, I think there's, there's clear direction given to me and my staff to continue that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'll close public input and bring you back to the board. Do you have the direction or is there anything you're unclear of, Lars?
No, I, I feel like I have enough direction for staff to continue to work on, on this in, in whatever fashion we may be able to. And I'm, my recommendation would be to have that go through that master plan process, which the board will be receiving in the next couple of months, an introductory presentation. And so that, that'll be a timely presentation there.
All right. Ms. Grant, do you have, do you think? Okay. All right. Well, looks like we have the direction, and we'll go ahead and close this item. We will take a short break and then come back at 10:55. I know we're a little behind, and we got to do the presentation for the next item, but bear with us here and we'll move forward from there. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like we got the microphone on, and we'll go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda. 6.6 Presentation of Certificates to the Participants of the CSAC William Bill Chiat Institute or Chiat Institute for Excellence in County Government. And with that, we have Graham Nowes and Chastity Benson from CSAC here to present these awards. And with further ado, I'll give the floor to you.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Crandall and members of the board. It's terrific to be with you all. And before I dive in, I do want to celebrate the youth who shared their voice on the last item. That certainly highlights the great promise of future Lake County leadership. So love to see that engagement in the, in the process. As you indicated, Mr. Chair, I'm Graham Nowes. I'm the Executive Director of the California State Association of Counties, and I'm pleased to be joined with Chastity Benson, who's our Director of Operations and Foundational Programs or Educational Programs for our California Counties Foundation, which means she makes the institute work. And today we get to recognize the individuals who have earned their county executive credentials over the course of this summer. Our CSAC Institute has been educating county elected officials and staff now for 14 years, and it's never been stronger. And in fact, it is the premier county leadership and policy development institute in the country. And so we've been particularly thrilled to have a satellite campus in the Mendocino Lake area for some time. The numbers of county elected officials and executive staff who have taken courses and received their credentials continues to grow. And in fact, we have now exceeded 2,000 county officials and senior staff that have earned their credentials, which requires completing more than 60 hours of coursework. So a pretty impressive feat for training the great talent that you and other counties have in your organizations. I want to take just a very brief minute just to look at the true value. I want to take just a very brief minute just to look at the true value of the CSAC Institute and specifically the value it has provided to California counties. In this time where we recognize the complexity of counties and this great intertwined relationship, this complex relationship with the state, with the responsibility that comes from the state to counties, the limited authority and flexibility that you have in order to carry out services, that challenge becomes ever more, ever more difficult when workforce changes occur. And when folks like Carol Hutchinson, who retired as your county administrative officer just a number of months ago, much like her, were losing institutional knowledge. It's true in every county in California. It's true in the private sector and in the public sector. And it really underscores the great importance of the institute to hold on to that knowledge and be a body of research in terms of holding on to that knowledge and also ensuring that there's some continuity as we move from generations from one leader to, from one leader to the next. Chastity, as I mentioned, is the powerhouse behind the CSAC Institute. She makes the engine run and connects directly with so many county leaders across the state. And so I'm going to ask Chastity to share a little bit about the institute and Lake County and the specific individuals that we will be celebrating this morning. Chastity.
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. As Graham mentioned, the CSAC Institute significantly helps the knowledge transfer process by providing critical background and perspective on a variety of county issues and programs. Participants have the opportunity to learn about leadership competencies, workforce development, negotiations, presentation skills, coalition building, and diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workplace, and a host of other topics as they navigate their leadership path. Combine that with the context, background, and perspective the institute provides on issues unique to California counties, it's safe to say that Graham is right. We have become one of the premier, if not the premier, continuing education program for county officials in the country. If you haven't participated in the CSAC Institute, I urge you to consider taking a course and pursue your credential. You will be joined by several dozen other Lake County family members who have completed their executive credential, including Chair Crandall. Speaking of credentials, we are pleased to be here today to honor eight members of the Lake County family who recently earned their executive credential. On behalf of the California Counties Foundation, CSAC, our 58 counties, we thank you for your commitment to public service. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chair Crandall to present the awards.
Thank you for that. And I can attest that the course is, of course, the new supervisors' course is always, we've all been a part of that. And taking a deeper dive really does help understand a lot more about county government and work with other colleagues with an in-depth dive as well. I took full advantage of the new method of Zoom during COVID to conduct that. So that's where that came from. I've heard that before. Supervisors had to drive everywhere in the state to take these classes, so I got lucky. But without further ado, we're going to go ahead and start, and we're going to call first and foremost Rachel Dillman. And is she here or is she online?
I'm right there.
Oh, there she is, right there. So we have your, we have your certificate and it's framed in this nice frame for you. And when you're ready to get it, we'll have it ready for you. All right. Lisa Faraco. And we see you're online as well.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Genevieve Harrington. Oh, there she is. She's online as well. George Scott Horning. Come on up. Yeah.
It was a really good experience. The classes are great, and I think they help prepare you for supervising and being in a management position. All right. Thank you much.
Lourdes Pantaleon.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a really great experience, so I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Before, I wanted to make sure, Genevieve, did you have any comments to make if you'd like to unmute? No?
Thank you for the opportunity. It was definitely a great one.
Lisa, what about you? Would you have anything to add?
Same. I just feel very fortunate to have been able to participate in this opportunity, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
And Rachel, if you would have anything to add? Go ahead.
I would just say ditto. I really did enjoy the classes. I think I got something out of it. So it's time and money well invested. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for not starting out that way, but I realized we were going with that. So Stephen Phillips.
I'd like to say that along with what I learned about myself, I also got to network with a bunch of people that worked for the county, Lake County and Mendocino County, that now I consider friends.
Thank you, Stephen. Pam Samick.
It was a great opportunity, great classes. Look forward to hosting more, and it was great having it in Ukiah.
Thank you, Pam. Teresa Shoen. And I see you're online. Congratulations. Is there anything you would like to say?
Thank you to the county. I appreciate, this was wonderful training. The curriculum was great. The educators were fabulous.
All right. Thank you. And is that, okay, that's everybody. So we'll give one more round of applause to everyone. Thank you very much. Good work, and I'm very proud of you to conduct this extra work, you know, to invest into yourself. And that's very important. It gives you the opportunity to just, again, I think I like what was mentioned about learning more about ourselves. At times, it's part of it, you know? So networking with a lot of other counties, when we see that they're dealing with the same struggles we are, we're able to relate and, you know, apply it where it needs to go. So, all right, I don't have anything else. I don't know if anyone from the board or anyone from the public would like to say anything. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just want to say congratulations for all of you for taking the time out to continue your education and your knowledge and your skill sets for serving Lake County. I know all of you that have received this, I've already seen you in a role of leadership, and knowing that you've gone through this program only gives me more hope as to where we're going in the future. Chastity, you are in every single workshop, institute, program that I've ever been involved in. You are the glue, as far as I'm concerned, for CSAC, for ensuring that we continue to further ourselves and push ourselves even more. So thank you. I'm sure Graham knows that better than anyone else. But I appreciate what CSAC has to offer for the counties to make sure that we're well aware of what's going on outside of just the scope of the work that we do here. Sometimes we kind of have our blinders on with the work that's in front of us, and you guys help us to see the rest and push forward. So thank you and congratulations.
Good picture.
Oh, I guess we, yep, we need to get a big picture here.
If you received an award and you're in this chamber, you're going to have to come up for the picture.
We need to do a picture, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to ditto what you said with Chastity. I just seen her at RCRC as well, so, yeah.
She's everywhere.
Yeah.
Make sure you get centered so you get Genevieve.
And thank you, Graham. I don't know if you had any concluding comments.
I would just say thank you to your board for your investment in this and for the partnership to bring an institute satellite campus up to the Mendocino Lake area. It was not an easy feat to pull off for anyone involved, but absolutely a good use of our resources and hopefully yours as well to provide that leadership opportunity. And your community should know that this leadership development is about providing a higher level of services in the community. It's about understanding how to best support you and your board and to deliver the most exceptional services possible within the resource constraints that you are faced with in Lake County. So we're thrilled to have that partnership.
Thank you, Graham. Chastity, did you have anything else to add?
No, just thank you for your partnership and for your investment into the CSAC Institute. Appreciate all of you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you both very much for being a part of this. And with that, I did open to the public. Yes. And so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board, close this item, and we'll move on to the next item of the agenda.
I think you did. You may want to do that.
Okay. I thought I did too. So I'll open it up to the public briefly. Is there anyone that would like to come up to the microphone and make a statement about this item on the agenda? Okay. I'll look on Zoom. I don't see any hands up, so I will bring it back to the board and we will close this item. Thank you and congratulations, everyone, for your hard work. All right. With that, we will move on to our 6.7, Consideration of Presentation of Energy Conservation Recommendations for County Facilities and Be Consideration of Presentation of Facilities' Condition Assessments for County Facilities. With that, we will introduce Lars Ewing, our Public Services Director, who is back to present on this.
Well, good morning, Board. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. There are, there are actually two separate topics with this agenda, shows obviously with the A and the B. And while they were, they were both pursued separately over the last year and then some, the culminating reports are done at about the same time. They're both county facility-based, and there is some correlation between the two. So I thought it would be beneficial to kind of view them in one sitting. So the two, the two topics are energy conservation and building condition. The A is energy conservation measures, which we will take up first. In July of 2021, your board selected Train Energy Services as an ESCO, an energy services company, to look at potential building energy improvements. Doug Walker is on with Train, and I'll hand it over to him here very shortly. But the agreement that the county entered into with Train was a zero-cost agreement. And the way an ESCO works at a high level is essentially, they, they come in, they try to find any potential building improvements that would result in cost savings on an energy basis, and that would obviously save the county money, and their profit would be generated largely from those cost savings. So Train came through, did a very thorough analysis of the majority of county buildings, and they did complete what's called a preliminary investment-grade energy audit, which was included in your board's packet. So I'll hand it over to Doug. He does not have a presentation. I think it's going to be kind of a brief few words, and I'll hand it over to Doug.
Thank you, Lars. Yes, we did do a preliminary evaluation of the county, looking at 98 buildings. And from those, through our initial analysis, we ended up going onsite and surveying 25 of your buildings. We were pleasantly surprised to find that Lars and Bob and team have done actually a fantastic job of keeping the facilities up to date. We look at HVAC, we look at lighting, and all of this has been taken care of. There's very few units that are past their useful life on the HVAC side of things. All of the lighting has been changed, or the majority of all lighting has been changed to LED. So from an ESCO perspective, there wasn't anything that we could assemble where we find outdated equipment, where new equipment and its energy savings will help to pay for that over time. So with that, we gave kind of a clean bill of health back to Lars on our preliminary audit analysis, and just letting him know that unfortunately for us, we can't find a project to assemble, but it just means you're doing everything really great. So Lars, back to you.
All right, Derek. Thank you, Doug. I wish he hadn't said my name because he did say Bob. Bob Allen, Facility Superintendent, who I had hoped would be able to be here because he deserves and his staff deserve all the credit. They have over a number of decades, to be quite honest, made that a priority, that being energy conservation. You know, Doug mentioned LED upgrades, HVAC. These improvements are not commonly done by county staff. Most commonly, those are projects that are contracted out, upgrades. You know, it's one thing to go and change a filter. It's another thing entirely to upgrade a building's HVAC system. And that's what your staff does, and they deserve a lot of credit. So I am thankful that we're in an age that we're recording these so that Bob Allen, Aiden Pearson, as a lead worker, and all the facilities maintenance technicians that we have get the credit. Because while it's, I mean, kudos to them, it's unfortunate for Train, but this is what we wanted, right? I don't want to hand over to Train any money for energy conservation. Let's see, you know, we've done it ourselves, and so that's a, that's a good thing. It does not mean that there aren't opportunities. The B of this presentation is the condition of county buildings. There are opportunities, certainly needs there that extend beyond energy conservation. But I do want to highlight the couple of recommendations that aren't necessarily energy conservation-based. They're more about alternative power generation, really, is the solar panel recommendations that are in the packet. Specifically, there's, oh, there's about eight or 10 buildings that they proposed, recommended facilities at, along with electric vehicle charging stations as a component of the recommendations. You'll see in the, in your budget in the next couple of days, one of those projects is in there. And I also want to highlight some preliminary information that I believe the county received for the libraries about a grant that librarian Christopher Veach and I worked on, which includes solar at those three libraries. So, which, all of which were recommended here. So we have a, you know, somewhat of a path forward, but we do want to continue looking at opportunities for solar. It just, it wouldn't be through an ESCO approach, it would be through pursuing it on our own. So this was an encouraging report to read, but at the same time, it doesn't lead to a next step with them. So, you know, we are, you know, we're saying at this point, the recommendation to not move ahead with Train on the ESCO component of Train, which, by the way, is uniquely different from the advanced energy side of what Train is pursuing. So that really does wrap up my presentation, and I believe Doug's. I do want to thank Doug. He came in about, you know, half, actually, near the early stages, but was wonderful to work with and had a, his staff had a lot of expertise that they brought to the table. So thank you, Doug. Thank you, Train and the board. Happy to answer any questions on item A. I can jump into item B if you prefer or answer any questions here.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a quick question, because I've always put it with the energy conservation, but maybe it is part of item B. But were windows looked at to see if there is a need for an upgrade, to be able to seal the building up and make it a little bit more insulated?
It's A and B, and I think Doug can probably answer a little bit more about the level of detail they looked at for energy conservation purposes. But windows are a large component of the building condition assessments. But Doug, do you recall or can you comment on the window, really the building envelope, I guess is a better way to say it, across the board?
Yes, we did not go into the building envelope at that time during the preliminary analysis that we were doing. We were looking at some of the larger areas, but no. The quick answer is no. We did not get into the building envelope.
But we'll get into the.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes, we will. We will. Not, we won't get into that granular level of detail during the presentation, but it is a component of that assessment.
All right.
Are there any other questions? I can move on.
Supervisor Simon?
That's one of the questions, just comments. Glad to see this.
Now, that's one of the questions coming. Glad to see this report being done. I think the timing is perfect. As we look at the opportunities, myself and Chair Crandall obviously did a press conference with Congressman Thompson about the opportunities that will be coming down through the Inflation Reduction Act and other opportunities there. So as we've always talked about with the board, I know we're doing stuff for the roads, having projects that are ready to go, important. Having that plan for basically shovel-ready projects, to use that term, as we move forward, I think is very important for our opportunities to capitalize on those dollars that are going to be coming down. But I did have a couple of questions on some of the proposed ones. One would be social services, because we don't own that building.
No.
So that's a question.
Yeah, we included social services because they have a longstanding lease agreement with, at that, at that facility, and because it's, it's one of the largest buildings in the county. But you are right. It is, it is not county-owned, and anything that is pursued there would have to be done under the terms of the, of the lease agreement.
Okay. And, you know, obviously, the courthouse parking lot, it's great to see that project, you know, at least on paper, as a conceptual idea, because we've been talking about that for quite a while. I know you've been looking at it too, look at those opportunities. The only other building or area that I was wondering if was looked at, Lars, or is our, I don't know what we call it, right, the fleet yard or where the cars are down here. Was that area looked at?
It was, it was considered, Doug, this is the central garage, yeah.
What's the term?
Central garage or...
Essential garage, there we go, okay.
So it wasn't a recommendation for, for solar. I, they did include those facilities with respect to the HVAC and LED lighting, but, but it didn't stand out, I think, probably because of, you know, looking at the utility billing, that it really wouldn't generate a project that would, that would have a whole lot of cost savings from solar. And I, I see Doug nodding his head that that's likely what occurred, so.
Okay. I guess my question would come, you know, if we're going to be moving towards changing our fleet, which that needs to be a long-term focus of hybrid vehicles and other things. I think that charging station opportunity there, that's the, the prime one for us. I know besides the courthouse that everybody parks that every day, for the actual fleet, for our employees that'll be using those vehicles in the future. So that's the only reason I brought it up, just to ask that question.
Absolutely. I, I'm glad you did. That's, that's a conversation that extends certainly beyond public services.
Yeah.
But, you know, it is entirely within the county and the county fleet. If there is a pursuit for, for electric, then these EV charging stations and solar to, to support them is, is a necessary component of the infrastructure to have there. So, but it was not included in there for that reason.
Supervisor Spatie?
And I'll just follow up on that. I appreciate that Supervisor Simon is constantly bringing up the idea of when are we going to start shifting over to some more renewable energy for our vehicles? We have a large number of vehicles. And to me, that's part of energy conservation, and so I hope it could be a part of that conversation when we go back through this again, because we're going to have to figure out, the idea for energy conservation is not necessarily just so that we could be good to the planet and we're conserving energy. It's also for our pocketbooks. And in the long run, it's going to help us be able to shift our budget from spending it on energy to being able to spend it on services and projects and things like that. So I would love to see it kind of morphed into what are we doing to conserve energy when it comes to our vehicles as well.
Okay. Yeah, this, just to emphasize, this was focused on the facilities component of it, but, but absolutely, I can, I can carry that on to the, to the right folks that, that would need to look at that and just pass on the recommendation, I suppose.
All right. On A, I guess I'll go ahead and open it up for the public briefly. Not seeing any hands up or in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for B.
At this point, maybe I'll, I'll thank Doug for joining and sending you on your merry way. So thank you, Doug.
Sorry, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
All right. So item B, Facilities Condition Assessment for County Facilities. In the, in the summer of 2021, and actually while I'm talking, I believe, Johanna, you have a presentation that maybe you can share that. In the summer of 2021, Public Services contracted with, with a company called the Gordian Group. It was actually completed through a GSA contract that they have. And they did a, what's called a pilot, pilot project for the library facilities. We wanted to get a sense of would, would we benefit from a facilities condition assessment on a county-wide basis? And there was some synergy, I guess you'd say, between county libraries, specifically Christopher Veach, having some interest in, in facility condition assessment, capital improvement plan, and, and this, this approach. So we identified the county libraries to start a pilot project, which, which was completed. Staff was, was happy with, with the completion of that assessment and the, the presentation of, of the, the actual program that we would have our hands on after the fact. And so we did take the step into having Gordian do an overall county facility assessment. The, the facility condition assessments, while it was, it was not boots-on-the-ground for every single building in the county. There were about 35 buildings, I believe, that, that we actually had boots on the ground, full inspection by, by Gordian staff. The remainder of the, of the county facilities, which are largely, largely the, the smaller, less occupied facilities to the tune of about 95 buildings, were what's called modeled. And we, so in that case, we provided Gordian with all the, all the information that we have for those buildings, all down to the building system level. And they modeled, modeled those buildings using a program essentially to get a sense of what are the common systems that might need to be upgraded. And the reason for that was, was cost savings. It was significantly less expensive to do a modeling approach, and we didn't see that it was a good use of county funds to, to assess a shed that, you know, that's sitting out in the field. So we, we did identify the, the primary buildings. You'll see the goals of the assessment that are up here, answering a couple of key questions. Number one, what do we own? I know that sounds odd, but let's, let's identify not only what buildings, but what, what building systems are in each of those buildings. The second piece is what are the needs, you know, which essentially, as it says right there, what condition are our facilities' assets in? Your board is probably more familiar with a pavement condition index that may, may come to the board, you know, on, on a recurring basis. You might be familiar with a 0 to 100, 100 being good, 0 being bad. Well, you need to reverse your, your mindset. For whatever reason, the facility industry does 0 to 1, and 0 is good and 1 is bad. So, so it essentially identifies what condition our buildings are in and what are the needs. And then the third, third column there is at how much? Obviously, what are the, what are the costs of, of all these needs? You know, the common term would be deferred maintenance, but also, also necessary, you know, big picture renovations. And then the last, the last part is what is first? How do we, how do we identify what to tackle first with, with limited funds? A part of this presentation really is, is not only the presentation of the facility condition assessment report, but, but also a, the, the next step into a capital improvement plan process that will be a, hopefully, a board-adopted approach, which is not presented here, but it just gives you an indication of what the next steps are. So you see here the goals of the assessment. This is just a generic presentation or a generic graph that, that shows on the, on the, the left, you've got our annual needs, you know, to, you know, here's what we know we actually need to do, and, and how much do we, do we have on the right, annual budget-wise. So we know there's a gap, and so how do we, how do we bridge that gap? Too many needs, not enough money. So go ahead. What should we do first? And let me pause at this point. These are just a few of the slides from, from the full presentation in there for the sake of brevity and, and really just hitting on the, on the high-level topics. I just, I wanted to synthesize this down here a bit. But in short, what, you know, what should we do first? When, when they assessed all the buildings, identified the, the projects that, that they would see need to be done, they put them in buckets. You know, what are the must-dos? What are the things that we should just run to fail and replace it then? What, what projects can we hold for major renovation? And then what, lastly, what requires additional decision-making? So go ahead. All right. So this, this is essentially the, the summary of a, of a full-blown, a whole lot of work that, that went into what do we have? So on the, on the right, you'll see that about 130 buildings were assessed. As I mentioned earlier, 35 were done with a full facility condition assessment. 95 buildings were modeled for a little less than 500,000 square feet, a value of 193 million. So that's, that's what you, as a county board of supervisors own, essentially. That's, that's the, to replace those buildings, that's, that's what it, what it would cost. Five-year needs. Now, that's a lot, $90 million. That's what they're, they're saying in the next five years we need. Now, a lot of that is based on the modeling, which we are still working with to, to kind of right-size it because there are some, some components of that modeling piece that, that need to, need to be, I'll just say tweaked. But on the right-hand side, condition. What condition are our buildings in? So this is, you know, this is kind of the 30,000-foot elevation piece right now, and that is that we are, we're in the fair category. So 0.39, again, 0 being, being good and, and 1 being bad. So next slide. All right. Now, again, because I didn't get into the granular level, this, this slide and the next one are not a part of the, they were not included in your board packet. And the idea here is the next steps. What are we going to do with the information presented? These facility condition assessments, they identified the condition of the building as it is, and, and what systems need to be replaced, or what can be done to, to maintain or simply replace what is existing. It does not factor in the other, other factors. You know, is there, is there an operational need to expand? Is there a, a need to, to build somewhere else? You know, so really, what this facility condition assessment looks at is the buildings as they are and maintaining them in the same, in the same state and the same use that they are. But that is not, when you receive capital improvement project requests, very rarely is it, is it something that straightforward. You know, coming from my department, sure, you know, a roof project, you know, maybe some, some extreme exterior renovations. You mentioned windows earlier. That's a, that could be a significant component. But most of the projects that you see are want-type projects. They're certainly needed, but they're not, it's more about separate from the existing infrastructure. There's, there's some other driving force. And so I think it's important that we identify a process to create a capital improvement plan that factors in a variety of different, different, well, different factors. The next slide goes into it, but I don't, don't go there quite yet. But this would be the process that I would propose that, that the board, and this is just a, you know, generic slide that shows, all right, what would a CIP process, a capital improvement plan process look like? We, we receive nominations from, from department heads. We evaluate and, and have a resolution for approving of those, of those facilities. We score them, put them in a plan, and we complete them, and we go through that cycle. And the idea on the next slide really is the, is the heavy hitter here is just example criteria that would factor in above and beyond a facility condition assessment. What, what are, you know, what's the public benefit of, of any given project? What, you know, is there a legal or regulatory mandate? Is it critical to life, health, or safety? Is it an exist, are we, are we doing the project to maintain the existing infrastructure or, or, you know, rehab it or renovate it? What's the community impact? Is the project ready? Factor in equity? And how about the, the funding? Is there funding availability for the project? So the, the idea there is, is that as a part of the, the previous slide, as a part of the, the scoring, John, if you could go back to the, to the previous slide, the scoring piece is, there's some subjectivity to that. And so, so what I would propose is, is a, is a CIP process that, that factors in, or that creates a, a committee that would review projects that come in on a, on a, on a recurring basis. We go through the budget process, and there's, there's a time when those could be submitted. They would be reviewed, scored on a, on an objective basis, factoring in subjective factors, and, and then that would lead into a capital improvement plan. The county has, to my knowledge, never had a, a facilities capital improvement plan that is, that is certainly board-adopted and certainly updated on, on an annual basis. And that's what I would be proposing, proposing, that would be a board, a board-directed action that, that Public Services and, and the Administrative Office would, would lead with input, well, with project proposals from other departments and from, from Public Services as well, managing those facilities. And it would be, it would be just that. It would be a capital improvement plan that, that gives us a path forward. So I recognize that this presentation was, was very high-level. There's a lot more information in the, in the slides that are, that are included in your board's packet. Furthermore, we have a lot, you know, plenty more detailed information that is in the, in the program that we now have our hands on. We can look at any given building and dial down into, into a great level of detail, and we're going to be able to use that to our benefit. That would factor into one component of a, of a scoring mechanism. And those are just example criteria. Those, you know, the, the criteria that the board would, would ultimately approve. What I would envision is that we would create some scoring criteria and a, and a process that ultimately the board would, would, would provide input on, and we, we move on from there. So with that, with that completion, I, I realize that it, it does not go into the level of detail, but knowing that our, our buildings are in a fair condition does point back to the, the fact that our, our staff are doing a wonderful job maintaining an aging, and old and still aging infrastructure. I don't believe it was up there, but the average age of our buildings is, is, I believe it's 50. So, so we are, very, very soon, that'll, with every year that goes up. So there's a lot of work to be done, but happy to answer any questions at this point.
Supervisor Spatie?
I don't have any questions. I think this is absolutely what we need so that we can incorporate this into our budget, having a basic concept of understanding what do we need to pay to maintain these buildings and saving a specific portion over the course of five, 10 years, or whatever it is, to make sure that we have the funding and we don't reactively try to find money to be able to make the fixes that we need. We need to be prepared for it and plan for it. And this does this for us. This makes budgeting a whole lot easier and making sure that we have the funds available to us. So this is something I've been waiting for since we had the original conversation. So I appreciate it. This is exactly what we need.
All right. So I'll open it up to the public?
No, I completely agree. Just same conversation we had earlier, having that long-term plan and ready to go. You know, the worst thing we could do is just keep pushing stuff off and then get to an end-of-life on a building, especially with the roofs, other conditions that we have going on. I know we're taking small steps, but just as Supervisor Spatie said, this allows us to, that long-term planning to make sure the facilities that we're using to give our constituents the services they're asking for is very important. So Lars, I appreciate this. And yeah, it gives us the roadmap forward. So thank you. And I know, as you said, you guys will, your department, Bob and everybody, will go through and look at these facilities. This is kind of a high level as we move through that process. This will allow you to bring that real focused project to the board so we can look at that during the budgeting process. So I appreciate that. The windows that we're talking about, other things that are done. And, you know, I should have made the comment earlier too, to your department, on all the improvements that have already been done on the buildings with the lightings and other things. It'd be neat, and I don't know if it's in here you can tell me, just on some of the investments you've already made with switching out the lighting, HVAC, the savings that the county's currently seeing, and how that's going to be enhanced through these two agenda items that you brought today.
Okay. Make sure I'm understanding correctly. You're talking about how, how much cost savings we've generated from doing these? Is that...
Well, I know that you guys have made changes with the, you know, the lights and, you know, what type of lights are being used in the facilities and other things, and all those are, you know, those are energy-saving. They're very, they're minimal, but they are positive steps in direction. So I didn't know if at any point you guys had something like that.
Okay. Yeah, jumping back.
Sorry, I don't...
No, no.
I know. I should have said it earlier.
Not at all. No, that...
You need to let me know if I'm, we're still on the A and B, so.
Okay. So yeah, to, to point back to the energy piece, the, the type of projects that they envisioned, they, the, the energy companies would be replacing lights, replacing HVAC. And because they, they identified that these are LED, you know, that we have upgraded those, a lot of those projects aren't going to be in the facility condition assessment. But they're also not factored in, though we can. The, the program has certainly the power to, to put a higher priority on energy, energy savings projects. But, but those are more of the subjective type of factors as opposed to the objective, hey, we want energy to be, to be a higher priority than, you know, age of the building, whatever it might be. So, so it's kind of a roundabout answer, and I, I don't, I'm not...
No, I guess the question, I guess my comment was the great work that your department has already done on these low-hanging fruit opportunities with the lighting and other things. Those are, we already are seeing cost savings just by you guys being proactive of what you can have done with your department and your folks as you guys see those opportunities as changing out light fixtures and those types of things. Because that is a cost savings. I mean, if you're using the older bulbs, you know, it costs more to run those. So I'm just trying to give... just trying to give the credit that is due for your department of being, you know, foresight of, you know, keeping it off of this program, but how do we do those things to be proactive? So I hope I'm saying it the right way. I want to give you the credit that's deserved in those small changes.
Okay, I appreciate that. In my obstinate manner, I guess I just didn't hear, and I'll pass it on to the facility staff. Whenever, you know, whenever you or anyone who hears this, they see the guys in the blue shirts working, you know, give them a pat on the back, and they're going from one thing to the next. There's a lot on their plates, and they take it personally. So they're doing a great job, and I appreciate you saying that.
All right. That'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item on the agenda, A or B, I suppose? And I'm not seeing anyone in the chamber, so I'll bring it back to Zoom. Not seeing any hands up. Bring it back to the board. And wanted to see possibly, Lars, do you have the direction you need?
I do. I think the recommended actions in there were on A, direct staff to pursue solar photovoltaic projects. And I'll maybe to clarify that, you know, pursue them as in develop the projects, have them so that we can get to a point where they would be shovel-ready. And then on B, direct staff to develop a capital improvement plan process that would then come back to the board for approval.
All right.
Yes and yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. And so with that, we'll go ahead and close this item, and we will move on to our next item. Do we have, you guys want to push through on this item, right? We're good? Okay. Because it was scheduled at a different time, so we'll go forward. Presentation by U.S. EPA Region 9 Sulfur Bank Mine Superfund Site Team regarding progress towards a cleanup plan. And with that, it looks like Scott DeLeone is on, and we'll go ahead and give it forward to him.
Yes, good morning, Board. Deputy Director Dela Giannis is not available this morning, so I've been asked to make a short introduction for this item. As you may recall, your board received a presentation on April 19th from the U.S. EPA team that is overseeing the cleanup efforts of the Sulfur Bank Mercury Mine Superfund Site. Today's item is an update on their plans and specifically to give the board and members of the public an opportunity to provide input on the timing and venue for the planned public meetings and engagement opportunities. Hopefully, I got all that right. And so with that, it is my pleasure to introduce Gavin Polly and Carter Jessup with the U.S. EPA, who will be leading the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate it. Good afternoon, is it afternoon yet? Good morning, Board Supervisors. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. As Scott mentioned, the purpose here is just to provide you an update of progress towards the cleanup, or the release of the proposed plan for the cleanup of the Sulfur Bank Mercury Mine Site. We presented to you back in April, and at that time, we had hoped that we would be, at this time, giving you the details on our cleanup plan. But the cleanup plan has not yet been released. And so I instead wanted to give you an update on where we are, why that proposed plan hasn't yet hit the street, and give an opportunity for any input, questions, comments, and so forth. So hopefully, you're able to see the presentation on screen now. Is that sharing?
Nope.
How about now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So just quickly, the Sulfur Bank team at U.S. EPA is, myself is the team lead, the lead for the mine site and the work in Clear Lake. We've got new team members, Oji Martinez, who's doing work on the North Wetlands area, just north of the mine site. Karen Juris is our lead for the fish consumption advisory, and you may have seen some of those new fish consumption signs going up around the lake under her direction. And then Gavin Polly, as was mentioned, is EPA's community involvement coordinator for the site. Really quick outline of what I'm going to talk about, just quick history, description of the public participation process for the proposed plan, briefly touch bases on the tribal consultation process, and then we'll have questions and comments. So I already shared this information, so I'll go quick, but I want to recover it in case there's members of public on the line who didn't see this before. But just briefly, the Sulfur Bank Mercury Mine Site operated from the late 1800s through to the mid 1900s. Over 2.5 million tons of waste were distributed across the 160-acre mine site, and waste was placed directly into Clear Lake, unfortunately, as well. The site was added to the superfund list in 1990. It's the primary source of mercury in Clear Lake and impacts tribal health and lifeways in significant ways because of its impacts on the resources of Clear Lake and because of its proximity to the Elym Indian Colony, which you can see on the map here is immediately adjacent to the mine site. The Bradley Mining Corporation was found liable for the contamination at the mine site under the Circlia, the superfund law. And EPA has performed eight early cleanup actions at the site's date to address the most urgent risks to public and environmental health. So EPA is recommending a cleanup plan for operable unit 1. That's the area outlined in yellow on this figure. It's the mine site itself, as well as the residential soils on the Elym Indian Colony Tribal Reservation and the neighborhood there to the southwest of the mine site. We have two other operable units at the site. Clear Lake itself is considered a part of the superfund site because of the mercury that the site, the mine is introduced into the lake. And then operable unit 4 is this North Wetlands area. And actually, partly as a result of the tribal consultation process that I'm going to provide a quick update on, we've expanded the boundaries of this operable unit 4 to include this study area to the east and south. And these are lands that are intended for transfer to the Elym Tribe in the future. So the draft document is undergoing internal reviews and approvals. We have been engaged in tribal consultation, which I'll explain more on the next slide. We are still aiming for a fall 2022 release of our proposed cleanup plan. Based on input that we've received from the community during regular monthly meetings that we've been hosting, we're planning to open that proposed plan for public comment for a 120-day comment period rather than the minimum 30-day. We understand, you know, it's going to be landing right around the holidays. We also understand that, in general, the month of October is a challenging time for many of the tribal communities in Lake County, because there's a lot of ceremonies and other activities that would occupy their time and attention. So we wanted to accommodate those, so we extended that comment period. The outreach when we release the proposed plan will include coordination with various tribal nations in the county, local agencies, community groups. I'll be posting a full presentation about the proposed plan on YouTube and distributing that for viewing, posting in local newspapers, both electronic and virtual. We're planning on doing announcements on local radio, and we'll be hosting at least six meetings to discuss the document. And that's part of why we're here today to talk to you. So I mentioned tribal consultation. We've been engaged informally with the Elym Indian Colony since at least 2014, really since before then, but that's when our work with them really intensified. Formal consultation was initiated last fall, and we've had meetings with leadership as well as at a staff level. We've made adjustments to our proposed plan to accommodate their concerns and wishes, as well as making commitments to additional data collection to hopefully further address their comments in the future, their concerns in the future. And coordination with other tribal nations has been entirely, so far has been informal coordination. We have been holding monthly coffee chats that tribal representatives are invited to. Those are sort of informal opportunities for discussion of various topics related to the site. And we plan to offer a site-wide update for leadership of all interested Lake County tribes in the next month or so. So with that, I mentioned our 120-day comment period on the proposed plan. There are six engagement opportunities being planned. The kind of rough timing of those is on screen to the right. I guess the first of those is now. As I previously indicated, we'd hoped at this time that the proposed plan would already be released, and so I could be talking through the details of that at this time, but that's not the case. So we are still hopeful that by November, the document will be released, and we will be able to roll out this engagement timeline that you see here. Tentatively, we are looking at Conacta Casino Resort and the Moose Lodge as venues for these meetings. We're also going to have one fully online question-and-answer session for those who aren't able to participate in person. If anyone has questions, comments, concerns, input on this approximate schedule and these venues, if you have any other recommendations on other venues maybe we should be taking, giving more serious consideration to, we'd love to hear from you. And with that, if you have any other questions, concerns, you're welcome to contact me at the contact information on screen, or Gavin Polly, the community involvement coordinator. Your email address and phone number is there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Carter. I'd like to just highlight as well that the presentation that was conducted at the Clear Lake Oaks, well, it was the East Region Town Hall at the Moose Lodge that went really well. There was a lot of questions asked and a lot of feedback. I know, too, I think you, are you all going to meet with the Keys group on the 20th this weekend? Is that?
We haven't gotten follow-up on that. So we're trying to make ourselves more available so that if there's any sort of local groups that would like an update, that would like to request an update, we're happy to try to accommodate that. But as far as the meeting in the Keys this weekend, I don't think that that's something that we've been specifically asked to participate in.
And just to follow up, working with Holly Harris and Chuck Lamb, I know they were experienced with this in the past decades when, in regard to this. And then the discussion that we had also about the Spring Valley Lake Recovery Project and maybe working out a solution to use that sediment in some phase of the capping or something like that, maybe coordinating that, because it looks like there's a possible situation where some of this, these projects will overlap. And so appreciate the, you know, the ability to discuss that with us. So, thanks.
Absolutely. And I've been looking into that and look forward to continuing to engage with you on that.
Supervisor Sabaté?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. What is the actual guidelines that you have to follow for the number of meetings that you need to conduct in order to say, we've done this part, we can move on to the next?
Yeah. The document needs to be made broadly available to the public, and we need to host public meetings where the public has an opportunity to provide formal comment, where, you know, we'll have a court reporter to log those comments. As far as I'm aware, there's not a specific requirement regarding the number of meetings. It's sort of, you know, best judgment in terms of what meets that threshold of being broadly available to the public.
Okay. And the reason I say that, and I know it's new because now there's going to be a new document to review and provide input, but I know in some of the meetings that I've been involved with, with the EPA regarding Sulfur Bank Mercury Mine, has been that there's been meetings, there's been meetings, there's been meetings, and we've been slowly waiting over the course of the last 32 years to get to this point. Glad we're here. I guess my question is more towards Supervisor Crandall, since this is in his district. Is 120 days, is it necessary to extend it that long? Can it be 90 days? Can it be less? Because we seem to be a little bit behind where the document should have already been available. Can we back that up so that we can try to get back on a normal timeline that we should have been on as of last year? Just trying to see what can be done to make sure we do get the input and the feedback, but that we can try to regain the lost time that we're losing right now by not having the document available?
I mean, I would just defer to EPA and what they've agreed to. They mentioned reasons why they wanted to extend it, so I would just defer to them.
Okay. It's a fair comment, though, and I can say on that, that we are not, we're doing a lot of parallel tracking right now. I'm getting things in place to be sure that we're hitting the ground running after the document is circulated. So that additional review period hopefully should provide the public more opportunity to weigh in, but shouldn't lead to further delay in progress towards the actual cleanup work that we're all waiting for.
And if I remember correctly, for the future timeline, was it looking at 2024 for hopes to get started with the actual cleanup action?
Yeah, 2024, 2025 is the timeframe that we're aiming at. There's a lot of work to do before then, a lot of detailed design work, and all that needs to be contracted and funded. And so that whole process can take time, but that is still the, sort of the best-case scenario for when we would be moving to our on-site.
Okay. Well, I would just, I guess my final point is for the environmental justice of what has happened to those who live nearby, let's hope we can keep to that schedule and that we can, like you said, have parallel tracks to make sure that we stay on that and we don't see that being further delayed, because I really want to see the action coming, and it takes a lot of steps to get there, but I just want to make sure that the timeline does not get pushed back any further.
Yeah, thank you for that. I absolutely agree.
And from what I understand in the statement that he made, I think that's the point of the extension was to ensure that the local people that are affected by it have the time to conduct their ceremonial, you know, entities and ceremonial, you know, they conduct ceremony during October and early November. So it makes sense why they pushed it back in that aspect, so that they don't interrupt that in the near area, because there's two ceremonial roundhouses on Elym. So I don't think that conducting a meeting with the core public would be ideal. They wouldn't get any feedback or discussion, because most of the other folks, even in Big Valley, would be busy during that time. So it makes sense.
And the reason I was asking is because I saw it was extended all the way through, like, February or something like that. And that's why I was asking, can we reduce it?
Yeah, it would be ideal. Yeah, if there's a way to, you know, expedite it, that's great, you know, but.
Okay. Yeah. And like I say, I think that as parallel tracking, I think is probably our best bet in terms of making sure that that comment period does not delay or disrupt the progress towards implementation of the actual work. But we'll also talk internally. I'll take that feedback back, that it's a concern about that long comment period delaying things. Appreciate that.
Any other comments? And so I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public? Please come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, and we'll start your three minutes.
My name is Joan Moss. I worked as a tutor at Elym from '88 to '92. I still have ties. I understand this gentleman here is William Fox from Lake County. Is that true?
No, that's not. That's not.
I'd like to know what his name is.
His name is Carter Jessup from EPA.
Jessup. Carter Jessup. Okay, I've tried to get a hold of him. There are people who own property at Elym Indian Colony. I know them personally. They want to give input. They want to know what's going on. They are disenfranchised from the tribe. There are 20, I would say, an estimated 20 people who are disenfranchised Indians, Native Americans, and this family owns property. Where do they go to get information? How can they reach the present tribal chairman? We have tried to reach the present titled tribal chairman a number of different ways. And how does this document get publicized to the regular accepted tribal members and the disenfranchised tribal members of Elym Indian Colony? This particular family is fearful of going to their own property at Elym. And people are threatening them and, who are not even disenfranchised tribal members, who might be tribal members at Big Valley. So it's a very complex situation. And I want to help to ensure... to ensure communication to all people involved. And I will come and get his name and number. Could you give me your email, please, Mr. Jessup?
Yeah, absolutely. I can put that back up on screen here. Let's see.
It's got the website on it and everything.
I, I really don't hear very well, but I'd like to put, to have your phone numbers.
It should be, it should be on screen there.
I'll copy them down. I hope to work with all factors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of them I taught to read when they were young. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Carter, I don't know if you can elaborate on the statement that was made.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for that comment. To the extent that there are sectors of the community that we're not reaching, that's a serious concern. We want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to have their voice heard. So I really appreciate you bringing that forward. My, my contact information is on screen. If you're offering to assist us in reaching these individuals, I greatly appreciate that. As far as your question of how we're going to make sure that, that folks know about the proposed plan and know how to provide input, I did mention we're, we're planning putting it out in local newspapers, both in print and online, advertising it on the local radio. We're also going to have a hard copy sort of flyer that's going to be distributed. The intent is to put those in mailboxes on the Elam Indian Colony. So, you know, we're, we're trying to go about this in a broad way to make sure we reach everyone, but the help of, of anyone in the community who might, might know folks who we don't know about, you know, word of mouth is a powerful way to also get the word out and I really appreciate that.
And so Carter, I just wanted to remind you that I, I think it was last year, it got you in touch with one of the liaisons to the tribal council, even though the, the entities are at some sort of odds. At the same time, there is a representative for the local community that is Rose Steele. And then I'm sure you've had your communications with the leadership intact. So just wanted to highlight that that bridge has been offered and I've given you the contact information for that as well. And so I noticed on your, the engagement timeline, that in some areas, you're going to have like a Canucktai Vista, you're going to have an open house and whatnot. So just, just highlighting what I see here and that we made that connection before as well. And if you need more help with that, I'm glad to assist. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, Mr. Jessup, just wanted to also offer, if you're looking to offer something closer to proximity of the mine area, that may be looking at City Hall in the city of Clear Lake and offering a meeting there in the chambers, that's a possibility, just in case you're looking for another venue.
Thank you.
And you could always reach out to me and I can help you make that happen.
Okay. Appreciate that offer.
All right. Any other comments from the public? I'm looking online. I don't see any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board. Any other comments or questions, concerns or anything like that? Right, Carter, I don't know if you have anything else to add or?
No, just to thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And we look forward to further development and expeditious improvement on this. So thanks again. With that, I think we're at a point where we can take a lunch break since we've covered all of our timed items. Looks like it's 12:03, so we'll come back at 1:05. How does that work for everybody? All right. Thank you. And so we'll close for lunch break and appreciate you tuning in with us. So it looks like we're back from lunch, of course. It's 1:05, like we planned. And so we will continue on with our agenda and we'll go, we'll go and cover our consent agenda items that were pulled and we'll start with 5.8, which was pulled by Joan. So the item is approved continuation of a local health emergency related to the 2019 coronavirus, COVID-19, as proclaimed by the Lake County Public Health Officer. And with that, I will go ahead and let you come to the microphone and state what your concern is.
Joan Moss, this is pretty, a pretty minor point, but I think it deserves your attention. You've still got an emergency going and you've got Sheriff Martin also declaring an emergency. But the security people, as you come in today, they told me that the county told them they are not allowed to give out any more free masks. To me, that's unusual since we go through, as officials, you go through a place where you don't get a mask offered, but we go through the place where you can see the mask. And I confess, I've used, I've taken a few of their masks and I get free masks other places. But I think you should know that some county department told the security people that they are no longer to give out free masks. Thank you. And I went and reported it to the John Portney, the head of the Health Department. I reported it to him yesterday that you might be calling him down and asking him about it because he didn't know anything about it either. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Susan.
Yes. Actually, the security group approached us because they were, they ran out of masks and we are basically out of masks too. And so we made the decision not to reorder any since there's no longer any mask mandate.
Okay.
So Jonathan probably won't know anything about this.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you. I also asked for this to be pushed to the side and have a deeper discussion. We haven't really gotten an update. I think maybe the last time was when we had a monthly update from Public Health, but I, I continue to keep track for the fact that we're still within our emergency that we've declared. We have both. We have the sheriffs, which after having a conversation with our auditor controller is what helps us continue our reimbursement with FEMA or with the state and Cal OES. And then we have the public health, which basically only allows for a public health officer to enact a rule if they feel that that is a necessary tool. We have had, our caseload is about to drop below a threshold where now it's deemed a surge. It's dropping pretty quickly right now. Well, quickly, it's dropping. Our daily cases in comparison to before, we're at 15.38 cases during this term of this surge. Before, for first Omicron was 45.25, for Delta was 23.13, and our very first surge was 22.13. Our death rate is 0.17%, which is 17 times more deadly than the flu. But at the same time, that's only based on the cases that we know. We are very well aware that everybody is testing from home or many people are testing from home. And those that are sick and have a very mild symptom are probably not going to the hospital to get tested. And so we know that that potentially could be a whole lot higher of a case rate, which would reduce the death rate even more so. For the first original Omicron, it was a 0.64% death rate, Delta 1.48, and for our very first surge, 1.56. My question is, we don't have any special rules or regulations for Lake County. And I don't know that we need a public health emergency to follow state law because we have to follow state law. That's just the way that it works in the way that our government is structured. What is our threshold to say that the emergency is over? And I'm not aware what that is. I've never had any numbers provided to us. And in case things do backfire and return back to a horrible situation, declaring an emergency is a simple process of bringing it to the board and making that happen. But I'm just kind of wondering, I like seeing these things shut down, the emergencies that we have because we have so many on our list and some of them can create trauma for others who were more impacted by it than others. And just kind of curious as to what is our threshold and is it necessary to continue the public health? The sheriff one, yes, I understand for the reimbursement purposes, but I would just like to know a little bit more as to?
I sent him a text.
You mean Jonathan or?
Send a text to.
And I guess maybe my question should be a bit more specific. Can we get, I'm so sorry that I don't have the name off the top. Croper? Croper? Our new PHO?
Dr. Sporer.
I wasn't even close. Sporer. So sorry. Can we get that threshold coming from our PHO? I don't know that our Health Services Director is the most accurate person to aim that question at. And I'm hopeful that we can bring that back to us for a discussion.
So did you want to, I think Jonathan took his, his microphone off. I didn't know.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Hello, community. So the thresholds are ranked by, and I would agree that the public health officer should probably provide an update now that we have one. But the thresholds are primarily ranked by mild, high and low tiers, right? And those are based on case rate, infection and hospital intake. So there is a threshold and tier metrics that we use for both enforcing certain mandates, mask mandates, things of that nature. So for the state, we go by the scaling system.
Okay. Anything else to add? Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
No. I mean, I was just going to say that this is absolutely a conversation for our public health officer. And I would, you know, I don't think that's a decision for us to make without that important member of our staff now.
All right. I'll open it up to the public briefly in case there's anyone else that wants to make a statement about this. I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers and I'll look to Zoom. And I don't see anyone on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for potential action.
So Supervisor Sabatier, you're looking for a presentation from the public health officer to the board?
Correct.
Do you have a request a date, open agenda?
I'd rather make sure that it works for the appropriate.
I'm in agreement with it coming to the board for the, the overall discussion. So I will obviously support you in that.
And also, and also the question is, even without a public health declared emergency, what I believe that Director Portney told us would still be in effect because again, state law trumps anything that we can do. It's the minimum standard of what we have to follow. And so just part of the questions.
Vice Chair Pyska?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the local health emergency related to the 2019 coronavirus, COVID-19, as proclaimed by the Lake County Public Health Officer.
Second. So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Okay, that one's finished. And would, touch base with, with staff on that one?
Well, I would just add that there's, you know, the funding that was available before is not available now. And so you probably should pack your own mask because they're not going to be as available as they were in public places.
Is there anything else? Did we, okay. And was there one in between 5.8 and 5.11 that was pulled? I thought I wrote them all down.
Just 5.8 and 5.11 and 5.12 and 17, I believe.
Okay. So 5.11 is pulled for a future date.
Yes.
And so 5.12 sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District, adopt resolution authorizing Lake County Watershed Protection District Board Chair to execute a lease agreement between the Lake County Watershed Protection District and Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. I see Scott DeLeon on. This is one of his items. And also it was, there was an email sent to us about discussing this and possibly pulling it. Supervisor Sabatier, I know you, you wanted to discuss some of this as well. I see that folks from Scotts Valley are here. I didn't know if, should we have them come up or, or just speak when? I'll just have you, if you guys want to come up and this is just the project that you're working on with water resources, we'll have you come and sit up with us. And Scott, I'll go ahead and give the floor to you.
Okay.
We're having a sound, Scott, we're having a sound issue. It's like, yeah, it sounds like a robot. Yeah.
Definitely not normal.
There, there, I see there's any difference.
Nope.
It's still doing.
Run down the stairs.
Yep, yep. I'll be running down.
All right. So as he's on his way down.
Keep going with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. So as we're waiting, let's see. As we're waiting, I guess we'll do introductions with, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Tom Jordan. I am the Tribal Administrator for Scotts Valley Band of Homo Indians. I'm also the CEO of the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. Jesse, you want to introduce yourself?
Jesse Gonzalez, Vice Chair for the Scotts Valley Band of Homo Indians. Thank you.
All right. And so we'll just look through the paperwork until Scott should be coming in any second. All right. Scott, if you'd like to come up and sit, sit up here this side.
Wish you could have heard yourself.
Yeah, it was, it was a robot.
It didn't sound like that on my brain.
No, it didn't.
Hi, Scott. Thank you for coming.
Well, I'm glad that they're here because I think the majority of the questions you probably have are going to be best answered by, by them. This item was proposing a lease agreement. As you've read, it's a lease agreement between the Watershed Protection District on property that is owned in Upper Lake. We purchased the property several years ago as part of the Middle Creek Restoration Project. The portion of the property that is proposed to be used is outside of the boundary of the Middle Creek Project. It's very close to the boundary and should the project move forward, we would need to stake that line to ensure that any, any work is being done outside of the project boundary. The, I'll be honest, I don't, I didn't include it in the memo or staff didn't include it in the memo, the status of their project. And again, it's probably a question that's better answered by, by Scotts Valley. And you're the board of the Watershed Protection District and it's your property. And so ultimately you make the decision if you want to lease the land for the project. I don't have any other real comments to make for introduction, but I'll certainly try to answer any questions that you have from the district standpoint.
All right. Let's see. And did, did anyone from the board have questions or anything of that nature? Would you rather hear from Scotts Valley first? So if you, if you had anything else to add, Thomas, would you like to?
Thank you. What I thought I would go do is go through the present or the presentation that I've given you, the sheet, so you get a clearer understanding. As you've indicated, as Mr. DeLeon has indicated, this is a lease agreement between the Watershed District and the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. Negotiations have occurred between the two on a government to government basis, you representing the Watershed District and I representing and Jesse representing the Scotts Valley Band of Homo Indians. The purpose of the project is to create a central wood processing campus on this particular piece of property owned by the Watershed District. That project in turn will create, will take in wood from a number of sources, primarily happening from the happening from the wildfire risk reduction activities that are occurring now, and we anticipate will incur even on a greater extent as we enforce the ordinance around wildfire mitigation efforts. That material is low, low cost, actually no cost, no, no commercial value material that needs to go someplace. We will take that material and we will shred it or chip it to two different levels, and then pack it in trailers, 28-foot trailers, and truck it to the various locations that we are creating a bioenergy distribution network here in the county. We've identified eight locations to date. Today, what I was told or thought might be the issues we're concerned were impact upon the scenic corridor, and impact upon the watershed, I won't get the area that you mentioned.
The Middle Creek?
Thank you, the Middle Creek Restoration Project. So, the first page that you see is just a shot from looking from Highway 20, Highway 20, and looking at seeing where the facility would be. That would include a five, a five-acre parcel on the property. You can see behind it already, there is a building, and that building would stay, as my understanding, it's not our, our building or proposed, but the rectangular, white rectangular outlined in black would be where we're proposing a site. We sighted it there, as you'll see on the second page, close to the gravel road that is along the perimeter, along one side of the, of the property. Identifies two squares, a red square, which is a five-acre parcel, and a, within that, a yellow rectangle, which is a one-acre parcel. The five-acre parcel is the area which we would anticipate holding material while it's being processed, that'll come in either as chip material as or bulk, bulk material. The one-acre area will be fenced in and will be used, will be fenced in and where the processing will occur. And the little white square is the canopy that would most likely be seen if it's seen at all from, from the street. We positioned it close to the, the area that we've mentioned before, primarily to move it as far away from the scenic corridor vista from Highway 20 that we could possibly do without impacting the, the future work and mitigation that will happen behind it. In total, that property is 42 acres. We'd be looking at less than 1% of the acreage being encompassed by our product, our, our project. The project is designed in conjunction with Habamatol in terms of recognizing that on the project area, there are potentially two indigenous villages that were there. So, our project is designed in such a way as not to do any soil movement or disturbance, but everything will be set on the property. The only disturbance to the soil will be putting a fence around the area of the, the yellow rectangle and anchoring bolts used to anchor down the various machinery that will be in, inside that area. The third page that you see is actually a blow-up more of what I've just described to you with the processing area and the hoop tent itself being a storage tent of 5,000 square feet, again, put to the back of the property as far away from the scenic corridor, Highway 20, as we could make it without encroaching, again, as Scott has indicated, the area that will be futurally reclaimed for, for the lake. The next prior page that we gave you was a page which would show you what's inside that, that acre area. We have a wood chipper, a wood splitter, a wood bundler, and the other machinery needed for that. And then, that's on the outside, not inside the canopy area. Inside the canopy area, which is, this next slide is just showing you the canopy, it's a PVC canopy, that would be set on C containers, again, so that it does not have to be anchored anyway into the ground. The C containers themselves will have enough weight to hold the, the material in place once it's anchored to the C containers. Inside that, we have a processing machine which grinds the chip material even to a smaller size, the size that we use for our bioenergy units is less than the size that you see in a wood, wood stove pellet, or wood pellet stove. So, it's the second processing that goes in, and we call it a crumbler. It's a sophisticated grinder that can grind down to a specific size that we're looking for. That would feed into one of the two artist units. These are the actual bioenergy plant units that we are, would have on the site, again, underneath in the canopy. They are there to generate the electricity, because everything that we've designed in here will be electrically driven, except for a tractor, a front-loading tractor, which we haven't found on the market to be electrified yet, so we'd have to use a diesel for that. But all of that is contained inside, inside and not visible to the, the outside. Again, they're there to, to generate the electricity and secondarily to create biochar. Biochar has a commercial value to it, and we would use that for a number of applications, used either as a soil amendment, as a primary application, a secondary application, is used as feed, cattle feed, it's, it's an ingredient that's added to cattle feed for digestive purposes within cattle, particularly dairy cows. It's also used in water filtration processes, and it's also used in the cosmetics industry. So, it has a number of applications, and we intend to pursue all of those as an opportunity through our secondary company called the Clean Carbon Corporation, which is located here in Lakeport on Main Street. Using it as a water filtration process, one of the programs we're looking at is talking with the Watershed District, Watershed Protection District staff, and, and in, in figuring out a way to use it to filter water coming into the lake and see if we can trap phosphorus and other materials, or other minerals that are not positive to the growth of the, and the health of the lake. And so, that's a project that we, we'd be looking at as part of, of this program. And lastly, just to show you how unatrocious to the area we are, we've added our bathroom facilities, sanitary facilities will be of the porta potty design as opposed to putting anything in the ground or, you know, creating any disturbance of the ground. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Supervisor Sabatia?
So, and I'll ask Director DeLeon, since you definitely have some experience with this, but I feel I need to ask Community Development. Does this fit within APZ as far as the type of use that it would be? Because I, I'm not seeing it, but maybe I just don't know enough to, to understand that it does fit somewhere within either the allowable use, or minor use, or major use?
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be able to answer that question. I, I don't, I don't know the status of that.
We were told that it's, oh, unless you have...
We have the Community Development Director behind you.
Maria, go ahead, if you have your microphone.
The only power generation facility project that I'm aware of is at that intersection of Kits Corner, on land currently owned by the tribe. That is in the process of getting a settlement agreement from an appeal that was placed against after its approval. It's not TPZ, so I'm sorry if I missed an address or an additional one.
It's APZ, not TPZ.
Yeah, that, that property is not, is a rural residential portion with a split zone with highway commercial.
Can I, can I clarify? You're saying that the land on Highway 29 is rural, is RL, or rural residential?
The location where, the only one that has a permit so far is located, yes. It's right at that corner, at Kits Corner, you know, where you see that old walnut orchard?
Yeah. And, and I remember that project, and I didn't look at the zoning for this, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. But this one here, there's a lot of split zoning in it, in the sense that there's a combining district. There's the waterways, there's the scenic corridor, but I think that its base is APZ, which is Ag Preserve. And just in looking and reviewing the zoning ordinance for APZ, the only thing close to it, but I don't know if it fits, is prospecting, claiming, and preliminary geophysical investigations for natural resources, including oil, gas, geothermal, or other mineral resources. Everything else is very specifically agriculturally related. And again, it's not specific enough for me to say, yes, it fits, but I, I feel I need to ask that question before saying yes and leading them down a path that doesn't work.
Certainly. So, I refer to Table 27 for major use permits, which does allow for power generation facilities within APZ, Ag, TPZ, rural lands, rural residential, looks like M1, M2. So, there are a number of zoning districts where it would be possible with an approved major use permit.
So, I'm sorry, but I'm trying to review that, and reviewing and listening didn't quite work out for me, but I'm gonna keep looking and...
I'm gonna just tell you again?
Please, sorry.
Okay. So, if you look on Table 27, that's a really quick guide to sort of help, help us answer questions at the counter when people come to us with ideas in certain locations. So, Table 27 has, it has the minor use permit table at the beginning, and then if you scroll down to like Page 38, it's the, or no, that was a zoning permit, then Page 38 is the minor and major use permits. So, the projects described count as power generation facilities.
Okay.
And you can see on Page 27-43, which in the PDF is actually Page 38, at line X, power generation facility, you'll see all those solid dots in the corresponding columns for the zoning districts. APZ and TPZ both have a solid dot, which tells me that it's a major use permit requirement, but it is possible in those zoning districts.
I appreciate that. I wasn't sure if it would fit, but this helps to identify that it does. Okay.
There are certain criteria. We also have a buffer zone. Let me find that. That's also, if you scroll up to Page 36, so we want to take a look, that shows you a geothermal buffer. So far, the one project at Red Hills is outside that buffer, so staff would have to zoom in with specific addresses to really see if, if it would be supported by the department.
Can you explain, like, if it's within the, the pink or the red, which is the buffer, that that means that it would not be allowed, or that it would be allowed?
I think it's excluded within that pink buffer.
Through the chair, I think it's excluded if it's generating a certain quantity of electricity, and I think it's in the 1 to 3 megawatt range, and we're in the 200 kilowatt range.
Good. Thanks, Tom. Yeah, there are additional criteria listed in subject, or in Section X, which I'm going to. So, it's, it's something that, that we'd be happy to take a look at, but I couldn't give you like a quick definitive answer.
While, while we're waiting on that, I have another question, and it's from one of the community members, from Julia Carrera, who sent an email to ask this to be pulled as well. And the statement was, "I think you will find this project conflicts with the scenic highway and the general plan, and Community of Upper Lake does not find it as a good neighbor project." And so, I just wanted to just consult with you about the scenic highway general plan statement there, and if that is in fact something that Community Development would look at.
Yes. Whenever we're presented with an application, we take a look at the zoning and overlay districts for the particular, or for the proposed location.
Okay.
And so, if scenic combining district applied to that location, we would definitely look at that criteria in our analysis.
And that would be in the, the use permit process, right? It wouldn't be something that, that's brought up here, because this is still contingent, and I seen in the contract, it basically states that, it says that if, if the project doesn't move forward, the lease doesn't, from what I understand, is that correct, Thomas? That if the project, if you don't get the funding, the project doesn't happen, basically?
Correct.
Okay. And then, they would have to go through the, the major use permit process, which would then include the group meeting with the citizens and neighbors of Upper Lake? Then that's when that would take place, and then the planning commission would take place then, from what I understand.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The lease agreement also has under Section 5, Roman numeral 5, compliance with federal, state, and local laws, ensuring all environmental compliance requirements are met. And then, under Roman numeral 15, a statement showing that there's no county commitment to approve any project associated with the lease. This lease is with the Watershed Protection District, not the county. But because the county, in, in at least some tangential ways, is, is somewhat of a third-party beneficiary in the sections mentioned in that provision, it's, it's just being made clear that the county is, is not ceding its land use authority under the Constitution here. And I think the tribal nation's aware, they would have to go through all of the environmental approvals that their project might demand. This is just an acknowledgement of all of that.
Right, in the Roman numeral 15, it says that it doesn't in any way obligate or commit the County of Lake to approve, that it approves the project, it still has to go through that.
Exactly. I think, I think at least the parties are, are clear on that.
All right. I don't know if there is a couple of, if there's not, Supervisor Pyska?
This is a critical project. The Scotts Valley Tribe is our partner in the Risk Reduction Authority. We, we have a huge problem with fuels around our county. I talk about this all the time with our fire burn vegetation, our vegetation management programs, and now our tree mortality. If we don't start having these structures built around the county, we're never gonna have a way to dispose. And I'm so thankful that Scotts Valley Tribe is doing this work and being our partners, and we're tackling these climate crisis issues together. So, I am, I'm happy to, to, to sign off on this lease agreement, and I, I really, you know, I wish you all the best going through the, the use permit process, because this is really important. This is critical for all of us.
Supervisor Sabatia?
So, just to voice my concerns, I know that I've been asking, we had to update because we found out about, I don't know if it was through our own research, or if it was through FEMA, that our flood zone is different than what we anticipated it really was. So, we've been kind of going through with the Middle Creek Restoration Project to kind of renew that line, to make sure that we're purchasing the right lands, and then some, just to make sure that we cover the project area. But what I'm seeing is, when I look at the flood zone currently, it's almost like it was built just to be outside, but I don't know if the new map is gonna push it up. So, I think that there may need to be some changes there, but I think that would be through the process. But I'm also very concerned, I know that we just had a conversation about Middle Creek Restoration not too long ago, and some properties going from fee to trust, with hopes that we can make something work. We just got a response from the...
Dylan Van Dyne from...
From Dylan Van Dyne, from the Army Corps, which continues to use very vague language of, "We believe, we may," and, and... Middle Creek Restoration Project is also a very important project, and I just concerned that if we keep adding layers on the project area, that we create more delays and more potential issues for continuing the project. On the other side, I'm also, there was a conversation that you, or a conversation, a statement that you made about the value of the biochar. I'm certain that your anticipation is to sell the biochar and make it as a viable business, and seeing $100 per year is, just doesn't seem like a fair exchange. It seems to be quite, in my opinion, a, a little bit of a giveaway. So, those are my two things that, when I read through this, concern me. It doesn't seem like a very fair handshake deal between the county and the ability to create biochar and sell it and make money versus $100 a year, not even per month. And then, on the other side, my concern, how this has the potential impact on the Middle Creek, I think that project is also utmost importance. So, those are my concerns. And yes, the project is absolutely needed, and it's too bad that the original project is still in limbo, but I don't know that this is the best, the most appropriate place.
We need both projects, and we're gonna have the opportunity to see what this finally looks like. And there's been a lot of questions from the community over the years on what is the impact, and how does this impact neighbors? And this is gonna be our opportunity to finally see it. As far as the lease rate, I'm okay with that, because this wood campus is going to allow everybody to dump their, their trees and their woody pieces for free. And that's what we need. We have to have these built into our strategy. We have to have multiple campuses around the county, which I know Scotts Valley is working on with this strategy, and, and... And we have no strategy within the county. So right now, CHIPS are getting trucked out of our county up to Shasta County, and that is not a long-term solution. So having this campus where everybody has the ability to dump their wood and woody biomass for free is a benefit to all of our communities, and it's going to have a long-term impact for how we build resiliency and keep our community safe.
Quick question, does this also include vegetation by any chance, or is it just mainly wood? It does?
It includes vegetation.
So for example.
More of a challenge, but it includes vegetation.
Well, and can I just add, Thomas?
Sure.
Yeah, so a lot of these, this vegetation gets taken to the landfill and dumped on top of the landfill every day. And so that is not an ideal place for all these things to be put. They need to be put in a campus where they can be processed into energy and into a product to make the biochar.
I thought the majority of it was brought to like Quackenbush, not the landfill. I thought you couldn't dump that kind of.
I, well, that's what I've heard from Terry Logston, their director, their environmental director. So I.
Maybe illegally dumped, but yes.
Well, there's not a huge market for compost any longer, but there is a market for energy, and the biochar is going to help with our filtration and restoring our wetlands. So this tackles all of our climate issues that we're facing right now, and I don't see a reason to stop. We need to encourage this project.
So Scott, I have a quick question. How does this help in regards to like clearing vegetation in channels of tributaries? Would this be something that would benefit that, to be able to take that, those overgrown vegetation that are in our channels and tributaries to this facility if, of course, if approved?
So projects like that, that is certainly a component of, and a hurdle for those types of projects. Getting into the creek, permitting, everything that's associated with that are all parts of a big project like that, and getting rid of the material that you remove is expensive, and it's always something that has to be considered as part of those projects. And certainly, if this was a facility that was available and disposing of that debris didn't cost anything other than trucking it, certainly that would be a benefit to a project like that.
Thank you.
I'll just add, you know, Clerk has $7 million of fuel mitigation projects that they've been working on countywide and no place to dispose of it. So that, I mean, that's a pretty big scale of these projects.
North Shore Fire District also has a similar one, and again, we anticipate those, plus eventually it's going to reach out into the forest as well. So there's no dearth of what we have in material. With respect to your location, Supervisor Sabatier, obviously, we'd work with Scott and his staff to place exactly where we need to place it. What we're proposing here is to be as far away from the view from this Highway 20 as we can, but obviously not to denigrate at all, impact at all in any way, the Middle Creek Restoration Project. That is a priority of this county. We recognize that as a priority. We support that priority. So it's the balance of where to put that location. Where we're proposing, it is not definitive at this point in time.
And just to add, I looked at the scenic corridor. I don't really see anything in there that opposes the project from the scenic corridor perspective, but again, that would be community development that would have the final say on that. But I know I looked at that because it's been a topic, a hot topic, when it comes to our planning commission, and there's a list of what you can't do, and I just don't see this within the list of what you can't do. So hopefully, that would be the case.
All right. Supervisor Price?
I appreciate Supervisor Price's passion on this issue. This is, you know, an issue, finding out what we're going to do with all the material that is coming down. You know, we have the tree mortality that we're dealing with right now in the forests, all vegetation abatement. There's a process that needs to be gone through to make sure this could be finalized in the area with the footprint, with everything that needs to be happening. But I think the first step is an opportunity to lease this property and see if that project would be viable through the process. We are constantly in meetings figuring out how we're going to deal with this. It's going to be happening for the next decade as the Tree to High Office is happening, our ingress and egress projects that we look at doing in the future, vegetation abatement, and then also biomass energy. You know, having this partnership and these opportunities in the county are going to be hopefully something that'll take us into the next 20 to 40 years as we're looking at having a reliable energy source here locally. And I know we're having many different conversations on that, but this is going to be a viable part of our future. I think in, you know, in the state of California, we're not a part of a pilot program right now, but I know the state does have pilot programs that they're currently working on in other areas and districts, but we're constantly asking for that opportunity. If it can be produced internally by a tribal government here, I think that it's just one step forward for us working together as government agencies to attempt to look at this. And I think it will benefit. There will be questions as we move forward. It's a new technology, and I'm in support of the opportunity today that we have in front of us.
All right, it looks like, do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this in the chambers? Not hearing that. I have some folks on Zoom, so I'll go ahead and start from the top. Phone 6205. If you could please unmute and state your name for the record, and we will start your three minutes.
Hi, this is Bart Levinson. If I have heard the presentation correctly, and it sounds like I heard it also yesterday at the Risk Reduction Authority, they're saying that there's a central campus in Upper Lake, but eight locations around the county. My question is, this is something that the Riviera's were asked to consider, I think a couple of years ago, by the same group, I think, wanting to put in a biochar facility that would be near the Riviera's and near other neighboring wineries. And it was rejected in our area because of concerns about industrial traffic, dust, fumes, and so that's one thing. Another thing is, at the time that that was being considered, the project was not saying that it could or would take any debris from the public, and I think this is a huge consideration that has to be known upfront. Will you process debris brought in by the public, or is this only going to be county-only generated debris? And where are the eight locations around the county? And are they going to be wood burning facilities? Are there fumes involved? Are there trucks? How many? There's so many questions here, and again, we had quite a while in the Riviera to look at this and evaluate it. I'd like to see copies of the papers that you're looking at, which I can't see, I'm on phone by Zoom, and this urgency to put this through seems rushed, honestly.
Okay, so.
Do you want me to respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so just to clear up a couple of things that might be confusing, this is only the lease agreement. This is not the use permit. Once the lease agreement is finalized, then the tribe will go through the process for their use permit. The tribe also has the property on Red Hills Road. That was not denied. They had a, they have a lease, they have a use permit, but there is litigation, so they're working towards a settlement. That's a separate issue. And so none of those questions that you're bringing up really pertain to the lease agreement. That will all be answered further down the road when they go through the process with the planning commission. And as far as the eight locations, this is, we're just talking about this one today, this property that they would like to lease today.
And so next, we have Elizabeth Larson from Lake County News. If you'd like to unmute, we'll start your three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have several questions. Has the watershed district informed Scots Valley Energy Corp. that the property in question is forecast to be at least partially underwater in the case of the kinds of levee breaches that are modeled in a December 2021 feasibility study released by Lake County Water Resources? And if it has been informed, is the corporation prepared to hold the county harmless should a flood occur? What kinds of chemicals and substances will this facility be using, and would they cause significant harm if a levee breach and flood occurred and caused them to go into the watershed? Have you surveyed the community of Upper Lake to find out if they are okay with this? Members of the Western Region Town Hall knew nothing about this lease proposal. During the course of this discussion, you've said people will get to dump their trees there, so is this going to be a giant dump on Highway 20? Does the timing of this have anything to do with the announcement mid-morning today of Scots Valley getting a $5 million ARPA grant for this project? And lastly, how did this get on the consent agenda? Because it doesn't fit the definition of non-controversial, and as a result, this has not been a transparent process. Mr. Jordan made available to you information that, as Ms. Levinson just pointed out, isn't even in any of our hands, so we can't even see it. And I think you should maybe consider, I'd like to ask you to think this over, maybe you should consider bringing this back after Upper Lake gets to hold its feasibility study workshop next week, because they're busy on that right now.
Anything else to add, or is that, that's it?
That's it for now.
Okay. Did you want to answer any of that, or did you have any answers for that, Thomas?
Well, I'll add, a lot of the comments she made are related to use permit issues. The reason this is on consent is, the agenda was pretty full. We brought it in pretty late. We put it on consent because it's really just the agreement to lease the land. We fashioned the lease agreement so that, as county councils pointed out, that it's just the agreement to allow them to use the land. They have a lot of steps ahead of them. We didn't feel it was, the use of the land was controversial. They still have a lot left to do.
Anything else to add to that, Thomas?
I'm not sure where to begin. I may, let me see if I can do it with respect to the question she asked. In terms of the potential of flood, we are aware that the area is, has a potential of flood. That's why the whole design is going to be on top of the surface. There's going to be no permanency built into the program. Material can be moved, equipment can be removed. We're not anticipating, unless you're talking about a 10 or a 15-foot-high flood, which would probably put the whole county under, I'm not sure that the flooding is an area that we would be overly concerned about. We certainly, if you looked at the pages that I gave you, we understand the drainage, and we understand the drainage on the property right now based upon the slope of the property, and so we're draining current water, rainwater in particular, even off the canopy, using a drain system that I didn't show, but we have, that EDA raised the question about. So we're understanding the water issues around the material. With respect to chemicals that we're using, the most toxic chemical that I can think of is diesel fuel that'll be put in a 50-gallon container, and I didn't give you a picture of that. I didn't think it would come up as a raised issue, but surrounded by a containment barrier so that if something were to happen to the container, it would, or the 50-gallon container, it would bleed into a contained area, and so we're not anticipating that to be a problem. We use the port of Potty again for the same kind of reason. We didn't want anything happening to the ground or denigrate the ground. Those were two issues that I remember. There was a third one. We made 10 copies of this proposal available. We assumed there would be people in the audience who are of a major concern would be here, and we were happy to make sure those copies were available then. Wasn't quite sure how to make them available on Zoom at the last notice.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to point out for the agreement itself, there is a, an assumption of risk and waiver of claims provision whereby Scots Valley agrees to that. There's also a hold harmless whereby Scots Valley agrees to that. With regard to the issue of the, there's prohibitions against hazardous materials with the exceptions of fuels, and there are very specific requirements as to how those fuels have to be handled and placed on the property.
All right, thank you for that. And so you've answered the consent agenda, and then you've answered some of those, and I'll also, you know, speak to somewhat the WORTH topic that was brought up as well. From what we've talked about before, the permit process would put that into discussion and give the WORTH group and everyone in Upper Lake the opportunity to discuss that. I think with, in regards to the grant funding, I didn't know anything about the grant funding or anything like that, but that still would lie with Scots Valley, so I don't know if that is, I mean, I don't think anyone else here, yeah, so I don't think that was something that was put into consideration. I know that they were looking for their own grant fundings from what I was told, so I don't know if you can answer that, or.
We have a preliminary notice of a grant award, but we haven't gone through the steps to execute a grant with them, and that probably will take another 30 days, and things could fall through. It's happened in the past.
Okay. All right, I don't know if that's everything, but on the questions that were asked, but I do see that we have some other folks. Did you have something to add, or? All right, so Terry Logston, if you can unmute and state your name for the record, we'll go from there.
Good afternoon. My name is Terry Logston. I'm the environmental director for the Scots Valley Band of Homo Indians. I just wanted to, again, we appreciate the support because as every resident of Lake County knows, that we have a serious issue of hazardous fuels, of waste woody biomass, of standing dead trees, and more and more dying every day. This particular project, one of the benefits of having it and design it the way it is, it is not permanent. So should a catastrophic 5,000-year flood event be occurring, it wouldn't happen in one day. We would know that the lake is rising, and all of the equipment could be moved because it's not permanently set. Regarding the question of the public dropping, just the general public dropping off their own waste woody biomass, we haven't gotten to that level of detail. I doubt that we will, we would have some other place to stage it. It's not really, for safety, you don't just want the general public in. This isn't the, you know, Quackenbush facility. We need reliable energy. We want to find funding to utilize this biochar to help mitigate and restore the Middle Creek wetlands. That's one of my big driving is to take, to take the products from Lake County, the waste products from Lake County, to help save our lake. Biochar is known, it is excellent at absorbing phosphorus, which as we all know, we have way too much phosphorus in our soils. And so to utilize the biochar to absorb phosphorus before it enters the waterway will only be beneficial to the lake. We have a grant application into the USDA. It's going to be several more months before we find out, but it is to take this biochar and use it for storm drain management, and to use it to absorb phosphorus in the wildlands, you know, further up in the Mendocino National Forest. We have partnerships with them. So thanks for considering this lease. That's the only thing on your agenda today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I see phone 6205. If you can keep it brief, I'll let you go ahead and speak briefly about whatever it is. So if you can unmute, state your name for the record, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. This is Bart Levinson. I haven't heard an answer to one of my questions, and that is, is this facility similar to the one that the Riviera and neighboring district was asked to consider, that we did consider and we rejected because it was, it seemed that we could easily have been affected by the project, not only the residences, but also the wineries in the area? And then number two, did I just hear Terry Logston say that she would not be having public drop-off and had no capacity? public drop off and had no capacity for that?
All right, thank you for that. And Supervisor Pyska, go ahead.
So, once again, it is a similar project on Red Hills Road, but that project is stalled. It did have a building permit.
And shouldn't be discussed because it's pending litigation?
Pending litigation. So we won't be discussing that. It is a similar project, but this is only for the lease agreement. So if we're going to talk anything about dropping off and who's going to drop off, those discussions will happen down the road when there is the use permit process. So this is just the lease for the tribe. This is the first step in a long process.
And Terry Logstern, if you wanted to briefly just comment since the question was directed at you as well, I see your hands up. And then after that, I'm closing public input, so.
Great, thank you. Yes, like you said, where this is not, this is just the lease and the opportunity, you know, this, this piece of parcel has issues of trespass, squatters, and the watershed protection district doesn't have a police force. They don't, so to have us there would be a presence that would be helpful for the neighbors and for the, for this property. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Just wanted to state briefly, too, that, that, again, the permit process, if even approved or even funded, goes forward, the Upper Lake citizens will have their voice. I am tuned in to Upper Lake, the Upper Lake citizens. I went to high school there. I grew up in East, so I'm pretty tuned in regardless of what's written. I'm very tuned in and I will do everything to be a voice for everyone when it comes to the Upper Lake citizens, when it comes to the tribes. I'm going to do my best to be a bridge to that. So I know at times it's purported that I'm either one or the other, but I just want to state that because I'm feeling that energy in some instance, if that makes any sense. So I just wanted to state that for the record. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just did want to correct Ms. Logstern that there is work coming from the watershed, watershed protection district to keep the Middle Creek restoration area clean. There's been installation of cameras. So there has been some efforts being made to mitigate the potential of illegal dumping because it has been a problem in the past. And efforts have been made in the past six months, I would say, is when those efforts have started.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, someone can make the motion if it's in my district, so.
Is it two actions or one? Is it just offering the resolution?
I believe it is just the resolution that approves the agreement.
Okay. I will offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Harnold?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Scott. And then thank you for the information. Let's see if we can get this included into, Johanna, this information, if we can get it included into the record as well, so. All right.
Thank you so much. So looking forward to this project.
Long ways to go.
I know.
5.17, I think that's pulled and not even going to be brought back. So then we'll move on to 7.2, discussion and consideration of letter of support from rural county representatives of California to provide additional cost share funding for the California Disaster Assistance Act for tree mortality. And so with that, this has been brought by Vice Chair Pyska and Supervisor Simon. So I'll go ahead and give the floor over to you.
So we had a conversation, Supervisor Simon and I had a conversation with Senator Maguire last week. And as you know, we have our tree mortality problem. We also have the opportunity to work through Cal OES, through the disaster act funding with the tree mortality disaster that was declared in 2015 by Governor Brown. That program offers a 75% reimbursement. And we know we have a multimillion-dollar project on our hands. And what I've been pushing for the last six months is try, how can we get the state to reestablish that 25% match that they did back in 2015, 2016 for 10 counties that were on that, that list? And that was through the resource budget filtered down through CAL FIRE. So what Senator Maguire has asked is that we get RCRC support. I'm not sure if it's a letter or what that support looks like. He wasn't really specific. But because Supervisor Simon and I had both been at that meeting, I wanted to have this discussion in open session so that you could help assist us with that. I have reached out to Stacy Heaton. I let her know that we were going to be having this conversation. She's very enthusiastic about helping us and whatever she can do to help push this forward. So the idea is that we will be having a meeting with Secretary Crowfoot and Senator Maguire about this. He just really needs to know that RCRC is also supporting.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just to follow up, I think the ultimate goal ultimately is to have a budget conversation of how we get that funded for that. So I think it's important, the conversation with Senator Maguire is making sure that we have RCRC behind us in doing those and making those requests as we move forward. As Supervisor Pyska said, you know, with the tree mortality that we have going on, we have an opportunity for 75%, but that 25% match, this is a large number, a large project. There's an opportunity where we could get the help, that we need to continue that conversation. And this is just one step in that direction after the meeting with Senator Maguire and his request, so.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, absolutely. I think getting any larger voice to voice our concerns and get the things that we need is, is good. What I'm wondering is, I think FEMA does the same thing. Typically, it's 75% reimbursement and you're supposed to have the 25% for local. But a lot of times, that's been forgiven. I'm wondering what that process is to forgive that might be matched at the Cal OES level to use what FEMA already does for us. Because I know we've had that forgiven in the past, not always. And so just, hopefully, that could be the same case, that we can utilize the same type of language that they use in FEMA for when they're capable of doing that, that we might be able to push that through to Cal OES, so.
I'm not sure about that because we've been going through the state funding process. We've been trying to set that up with OES as that is how it's been done with the other counties over the last seven or eight years. So this is not something new that is, we're trying to invent. This is just reestablishing what was already there.
Are you saying that they were forgiven the 25 or there was decreased already for those counties?
No, no, they were not forgiven that they, CAL FIRE contributed the 25% reimbursement. And that's what we're asking to be reestablished.
Gotcha, misunderstood that.
All right, any other comments from the public? I'll go ahead and open it up. Come on up and state your name for the record, and we'll go ahead and start the clock for
Joan Mas, I'd like to see this in writing before you, before you vote on it. The supervisors in Mendocino College wrote, Mendocino County wrote a letter asking PG&E to stop their tree mortality project until PG&E answers questions. And they asked...
Joan, real quick, this is basically just directing staff to draft a letter to support and submit to RCRC, Rural Counties. This, this isn't being, the letter's not being approved today. We would ask staff to draft it. And then what you would have when it comes back to us, right?
I want to make one more comment.
It would be a letter from RCRC.
Oh, okay, so we're, okay.
And, and so I would ask that you meet with RCRC and try to get that support and we could work together.
Oh, okay. Well, go ahead, Joan, sorry.
I want to make a comment. I passed out that letter to the supervisors. You read it? And I want to hear PG&E's answer because...
Joan, this isn't about PG&E.
This is about tree mortality.
Right, it is about tree mortality, but it's in regard to having support from RCRC. And it doesn't really have anything to do with PG&E. And so...
I think you should hear from the people on Wildcat Road and the people on Cobb before you decide on this. And I think that PG&E is paying a bounty for the trees cut.
Thank you, Joan.
This program, this is for our county program. It doesn't have anything to do with PG&E.
It, it, it has to do with the county program and not anything to do with PG&E.
I thought it had to do with tree mortality.
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do is see if there's any other comments from the public. And then I'll, okay, I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom. And so I'll bring it back to the board. So yes, once we draft the letter of support, I'll submit it to RCRC when I go to the next meeting. Right, I mean, if that's, if that's voted on, of course, right? Is that correct statement?
Or maybe you, you and I could work with RCRC to figure out what, what that support looks like or that letter looks like. When is the next meeting?
We just had one, so I think it is in either October or November.
Okay.
And I'll have to look again, but...
Yeah.
The agenda item right now says direct staff to draft letter of support to submit to RCRC.
Okay.
But, but again, your board can decide something else as long as it falls within the confines of the agenda item. It's just, whatever you do should just be clear.
So the next meeting would be in, actually, December, so. That's what I'm seeing.
I'm wondering how, if there's a way to get support sooner than that. I know that Senator Maguire was hoping this would be in the resource budget in January.
Well, they do have an executive committee meeting on the 12th and the 9th. Maybe if we work with Stacy, like you said, we can get that in and they can possibly do something otherwise. But yeah, the next meeting would be, the next board meeting that I would attend would be in December.
Okay.
I don't know that they're allowed to vote on things like that within the executive committee since they don't have all of the counties represented there, but...
Right. But then again, well, no, because it's RCRC. I was thinking Golden State Finance Authority or Golden State National Resources. I know they meet. But again, those are, I think they would still need to go through, yeah, they would still need to go through RCRC, so. But, yeah. Supervisor Simon?
You know, and like was stated earlier, we're not asking to create a new program. What we're going to be doing is looking up, hopefully, the, the former program, the language. What we're doing is asking for reinstatement of the program and their support, you know, in doing so. So I, I think what we have here on the agenda is correct, draft, you know, direct staff to draft a letter of support to submit to rural county representative to reinstate and fund the 25% cost share program for local jurisdiction. I think we're, we're right on track with that. If it's approved today by the board, then we can get that together, use the language of the previous program and just present it from there and then follow up to see if we can gain, you know, that support. We're not the only county dealing with it. I imagine once we draft one and begin to do that, I think there'll be some other rural counties that follow suit, hopefully.
Ms. Grant?
That's also the type of specific delegation that's completely appropriate, so.
Excellent.
Okay.
All right.
Is that consensus?
It is for me, yes.
For staff to write it, yes. I think that our message will be clear of what our needs are rather than asking RCRC to draft it for us. We, we want to make sure that we're getting the right message out to RCRC so then they can formulate their letter based on what we're asking. So I think as is, yes.
So there doesn't need to be a vote on this, then we're, we have a consensus? Or we do need a vote?
I suggest you do a by motion just to make it official.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to direct staff to draft a letter of support to submit to rural county, RCRC, rural county representative of California to reinstate and fund the 25% cost share program for local jurisdictions.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed and motion carries. And so, does anyone need a break?
Yes.
Okay, so let's take a brief break. We'll come back together at 2:20. All right, it looks like it's 2:20, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is consideration of response to the 2021-22 grand jury final report. And with that, it looks like we have Matthew here, Matthew Rothstein. So I'll let you go ahead and take over from here.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Board. Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As your board is aware, the Lake County Civil Grand Jury prepares a report on an annual basis documenting findings and recommendations that result from their investigative work. We greatly appreciate the earnest efforts of 2021-22 four-person hill and the members of the Civil Grand Jury. The Board of Supervisors' response attached to today's agenda was drafted in accordance with guidelines provided in California Penal Code Section 933 and 933.05. Many thanks to the nine department heads that provided departmental responses as well, which are likewise attached to today's agenda item. We are aware and have corrected a typo on the first page which mislabeled the date of the grand jury's report. Additionally, responses to the grand jury's report in, in case of emergency, a report on the Office of Emergency Services have also been added to your board's draft response since the posting of the version attached with the agenda. My sincere apologies that these were not previously available for public inspection. And Johanna is going to be displaying at the bottom of page four of this document and I'll read those, that new content in full now. Recommendation one, the disaster council to be reorganized to include community organizations such as both of the Lake County Fire Safe Councils, the Firewise Communities in the County, North Coast Opportunities, Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, and Homeowners Association as members. Disagree will not be implemented. Explanation, our board finds the described group of organizations already convenes on a monthly basis in connection with the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority. Additionally, we concur with Sheriff Martin's sense the currently designated membership is highly experienced and equipped to serve the purpose of the council. Addition of further members would likewise make it more difficult to achieve a quorum. Recommendation two, the disaster council leadership to be delegated to either the Director of Emergency Services or the Emergency Services Manager in order to function more effectively as an advisory body to the Board of Supervisors. Disagree will not be implemented. Explanation, our board concurs with Sheriff Martin since each member of the council has an equal voice and vote in matters heard. No such delegation change is necessary, and it would not be expected to materially change the effectiveness of this group. Recommendation number four, the disaster council to report regularly to the Board of Supervisors with written recommendations and updates. Agree, has been implemented. Recommendation five, the disaster council to meet monthly, especially during declared disasters. Disagree will not be implemented. Explanation, our, our board finds the present quarterly meeting schedule is appropriate. On full year awareness, any further changes should be adopted during today's meeting, if at all possible, as the deadline to submit your board's responses tomorrow, Wednesday, September 21. And staff recommends that your board approve the grand jury response as amended.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board? So I'll open it up for the public. If there's anyone from the public that'd like to speak on this 7.3, come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, and we'll go from there. All right, not seeing anyone come up to the microphone or on Zoom with their hand up. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the response to the 21-22 grand jury final report as amended.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed and motion carries. Thank you, Matthew. All right. Next, 7.4, consideration of update of 2022 committee assignments for members of the Board of Supervisors. This one has been brought forward, obviously, from a, from last, I think it was last week.
It was last week, yes.
And then, so yeah, I'll give the floor to you, Susan.
Thank you, Chair. It relates to the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. It does require a board member appointment. It generally meets the third Thursdays at noon. No meetings have been recently scheduled at this time. It does meet infrequently. So all we need is a recommendation and a motion. So all we need is a, uh, recommendation and a motion by the board to appoint.
Was it the third Thursday or the first Thursday?
Third.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion from the board or thoughts? And is that the only, only item of, about these committees that we're talking about?
Yes, it is.
I'm hoping it'll be a short time, but, um, I will step forward and, uh, take that position. But I'm hoping for a shorter.
Help me out here.
So what I'll do is open it up to the public briefly, uh, to see if there's any comments on 7.4. Hearing no comments or seeing no hands up, I will bring it back to the board for action. And I see Supervisor Sabatier has his pen up.
So I got a question. There's no alternate to this and it sounds like my colleague is really hoping for change to come in the near future, wondering if there's a way to back him up just in case he's not able to make it. That way we still have somebody who's showing up representing the Board of Supervisors.
Well, actually, Mr. Howe is present and it's.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, thank you. Rob Howe, Chief Probation Officer. Just some clarification on the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. It, it no longer really meets that, that frequently, um, quarterly at best, and we don't have a meeting scheduled anytime soon. There's nothing before that council that would, would hold up any action that we're doing. With the passage of juvenile justice realignment, SB 823, that established the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council Subcommittee, which is actually a, a committee that does have some, have to meet and have approval authority over some things we do, but that by statute does not include a board member. So just letting you know, for Supervisor Simon, I wouldn't anticipate having to do, um, anything up until, I know we're waiting for a new appointment for a supervisor and I don't anticipate anything being necessary before that.
And I'm prepared, I, I just make my comments hopefully for the entire board here that we get that done, so. But I'm ready. Rob, anything you need? So, yes, I, please, I'll accept.
Well, we do have the, uh, the Children's Council is, that, that's what actually does meet fairly often. Supervisor, um, let's see.
And I should be on that one, I believe.
Right, and you're certainly welcome. Uh, Tina was on that, uh, and that, that's something that is frequent, but it's not a board requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well, then, Mr. Chair, I nominate Supervisor Simon to the, uh, Juvenile Justice Committee.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and motion carries. All right, seven, wait, we did 7.5. Okay, oops. 7.6, consideration of resolution authorizing emergency hiring incentives and one-time retention stipend for the Lake County Sheriff's Office in response to critical hiring and staffing issues in Lake County's dispatch center and detention facility. And B, consideration of funding source as either cannabis-generated funds or fund balance carryover. And with that, we have Sheriff Martin here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Thank you. This is a carryout for Adam from last week. Um, we had discussion last week about the staffing shortages that were experienced, the drastic staffing shortages that we're having at the jail. Uh, I don't, I don't think I need to go over everything we went over last week, uh, but it was at board's direction that, uh, staff present a resolution, uh, authorizing everything that we discussed. I want to take some time to thank county admin out and there's a lot of work that went in with county admin, county council, uh, human resources, well as the Audit Controller's Office to put together something that would, uh, be workable for all the agencies involved. This doesn't just impact, uh, my department, uh, it affects several agencies as well as the probation department. I'll thank them, starting this week, they, um, uh, they have, uh, female probation officers out there that are adequately trained, um, some of which have worked in facilities before to help us out, uh, during our staffing crisis, to help us meet the, uh, the legal mandate of having a, uh, an appropriately trained female custodial person, uh, available and accessible, uh, while we're housing female inmates. The resolution, um, does the following. It provides a $5,000 retention incentives for currently employed, uh, correctional staff and dispatchers, uh, with the understanding that upon, uh, receiving the $5,000 hiring incentive, uh, that they agree to continue working with the, uh, Lake County Sheriff's Department in their current capacity or, uh, in a higher capacity or a higher classification in the same series, uh, for the next 12 months. The resolution allows for, uh, the, uh, application for that retention, uh, incentive to be open for 30 days and that'll give us a, uh, an opportunity to know what our staffing's going to look like for the next 12 months. It provides for a lateral, uh, hiring incentive and enhanced lateral hiring incentive of $15,000 for any Deputy Sheriff Correction who already has been through a core academy and the PC-832 laws of arrest training. Uh, and as I explained last week, that's, uh, pretty close to cost neutral. It might even actually be a savings for our department because the cost to, uh, send somebody to that training typically exceeds $5,000. This allows for 12, um, current county employees to be eligible for hiring incentives. Uh, current, currently that is not allowable, um, but we, um, recognize that there are a lot of people that already work for the county, understand, uh, what it's like to work for the county and may want to come work for the sheriff's office. So it opens up for a limited number of 12 current county employees to receive the hiring incentive, uh, with the, um, the condition that they have not already received some sort of hiring incentive from the county. And lastly, it provides for a, an enhanced hiring incentive of $20,000 for up to eight female Deputy Sheriff Corrections applicants. Uh, and again, these enhanced hiring incentives, both the 15,000 and the 20,000 require a three-year commitment instead of the two-year commitment under the, uh, the existing, um, hiring incentives. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I, I think it's important that you find ways to staff up, um, especially we know that unfortunately, the only mandate you have is the jail. Fortunately, the only mandate you have is jail, but I'd love to see your patrol officer still out there rather than going into our jail system in order to accomplish that goal and that mandate. So I think having incentives to refill the positions that have become vacant and especially the issue of not having the, uh, correct genders, uh, in place, uh, to also fulfill that mandate is important. I, I, I'm concerned, uh, and you actually even mentioned that you have, uh, one female coming to you from probation. I think probation is, in my opinion, the most likely to meet the requirements of what you're looking for. And when I see that there's a maximum of 12 employees that could get the pilot program incentive to moving out, my mind automatically goes to, it might be 12 employees from one department. And I'm kind of curious about how the board feels, also how the sheriff feels, about maybe limiting it to a number from a specific department, from an individual department so that you, we don't see 12 people leaving one department to fulfill your needs, which is great for you, but, but it would be nicer if it was kind of spread out, um, because my mind is thinking about probation and, and those that would have the highest potential to meet the requirements to be able to move over, uh, which maybe they don't have the similar mandates, but it's still an important part of the entire, um, public safety, uh, aspect that we offer through the county. Uh, so that, that's my only concern. Uh, love the fact that we're trying to figure out ways rather than using the exact same tools again and again and being in the same position. Uh, and I know I wasn't here for the first discussion as well, uh, but just my one concern that I bring up.
I would say that running the jail is not my only mandate. It's probably the most burdensome, but I, at the likelihood of, uh, 12 applicants coming from one department and all of them, uh, making through the entire process is a, a, a parlay that would, uh, probably allow anybody to retire very early if they bet on it in Las Vegas. I don't know, that's a, that's a likelihood, um, and just, uh, maybe I wasn't clear. It's, the probation officers aren't coming over to work in the jail. Their, uh, duty assignment has changed from the probation department, so they're, uh, performing their probation officer functions at the jail and helping us on a very limited basis where they're just coming out and performing, uh, search, uh, searches of females and entering, uh, female, uh, rooms, uh, with, um, male correctional officers whenever that's needed.
Gotcha.
But yeah, I don't, I don't, uh, I, I, I can understand your concerns. I don't know that it's a likelihood at all that we would get 12 applicants from a single department.
Hi, Sheriff.
Yeah, I just had a question about one of the things you said, the $15,000 incentive for the adult core corrections courses in penal code section. Uh, and you said that was going to be cost neutral? So typically you would fund that 5,000 from your department, but then through the incentive, it would be coming through general fund?
Typically what happens is we hire somebody. Um, I don't know, I think since I've been in office, uh, there's only one person that we've hired, um, that's lateral from another agency, uh, to be a Deputy Sheriff Correction or a correctional officer. Uh, it's typically an entry level position. People don't go to the academy to become, uh, correctional officers, uh, for the most part. Um, so when we hire them, we put them through the academy and the, uh, Core Academy is about five weeks long. Uh, so with the costs of paying their salaries and their benefits, paying them per diem, paying their housing and paying the cost of the academy, uh, on top of another, about a week and a half of PC-832 training, you can see the costs there. We're paying somebody and then not having them do the job. So the cost neutrality really comes in there where instead of them leaving for around six weeks, uh, and us paying their expenses, they're going to be already working, they're going to be trained up.
Okay. Um, I, you know, I, I think this is something that we have to do and you and I have had this discussion offline. It is a one-time fix and that's concerning. I hope we can really get that staffing up so that, um, the burden is not so heavy on those out you have. But, um, I guess just, I know you're, you're, you said you're banging your head on the wall looking for those non-financial ways to, to increase morale and, um, you know, just something to always continue for all of us, so.
I think the best way that, uh, that's, well, it's a financial, indirect financial solution is to get the staffing up there so our employees aren't having to work the mandated four 12s every week. And then a lot of them are, ended up working six, I heard, spoke to one deputy who's working eight days straight out there. And that's just, you know, when you're talking about morale, that's just a morale killer. People are, you know, they're, um, you know, they're living to work and they're not working to live. They're not enjoying the, the benefit of their labor and it's a, um, that's a tremendous detriment on morale. Um, and I want to thank this board for being so supportive. Hopefully it is a one-time fix. Hopefully it gets us through. Um, there's a lot of, um, moving parts on, on why it's so difficult. Like I say, it's not, this isn't a, a Lake County unique position. Uh, my fellow sheriffs, particularly across the North State, are all having difficulties hiring correctional staff, uh, with some of them even shutting, shutting down wings in their facilities, uh, or, um, trying to contract out with other jurisdictions, uh, to house some of their inmates to relieve the burden. So it's a, it's a tough problem, um, and the, I'm sure the, the solution's probably societal, one that's bigger than, than this office.
Sheriff Martin, um, you mentioned, uh, contracting out, uh, with other counties and how that looks, um, or how that, other counties are doing it. Does that seem like it might be just as expensive and, and difficult and arduous as what you're dealing with?
I'd say it's probably more expensive and more difficult when you contract out with other jurisdictions. Uh, the, the receiving agency generally has the privilege of determining which inmates they're going to take, uh, and they typically don't choose to take the most difficult ones. Um, some of the inmates have a lot higher needs than other inmates, um, based on their, their mental health status, based on their medical needs, uh, based on their, um, uh, the status of their, whatever the proceedings that they're going through, whether or not they have to go back and forth from court or not. And then you also run into the issues of doing those transports for those court proceedings. Um, and quite frankly, most of the neighboring jurisdictions don't have the capacity. When we, when we trans, um, transported inmates out during the Medesino complex, we took them all the way to Alameda County, uh, and that ended up being fairly costly, uh, for us. Uh, in that situation, they, uh, they required us to actually bring correctional staff down, uh, and still charge us on top of that. So, um, I don't know, I don't believe that would be a, a viable.
So like, like another example is if there was a contract with someone out of county, we still would have to, as a county, bring them back to this court?
Yes.
Or, or do it on Zoom if that's possible, but otherwise it would have, okay?
Again, yes, depending on what their, um, what their status is and their, and their, if they're, you know, pre-conviction, post-conviction, um, undergoing competency proceedings, there's so many variables there that, uh, um, you know, typically it's, I, I don't think that's viable. And we don't have, we wouldn't have the staff to support that either.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board? Um, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on this item? I'm not seeing any hands in the chambers or on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board.
And I didn't speak on item B. I would leave that to county admin to make a recommendation on where the funding should come from.
I, is Stephen on yet? I just texted him. I know our recommendation would be cannabis funds. All right, there he is.
Sorry, I was on a phone call.
Go ahead, Stephen. I don't think you heard the question.
Yeah, so Stephen, we're on part B of this item. I'm sorry, Chair.
Oh, it's okay.
Uh, 7.4, with regard to the sheriff's resolution, uh, it reads that, uh, consideration of funding source as either cannabis-generated funds or fund balance carryover. And your recommendation would be?
My recommendation would actually be cannabis at this point in time. Because all of the, most of the FBI is already utilized in the budget and anything that we have extra, I have items that are going to come forward in the hearings to take it up, to be utilized. But we can squeeze out some from the FBI if the board wishes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, since we're having a conversation about budget starting tomorrow and if there are changes that are made, um, can we make that final decision tomorrow and just say, yes, maybe cannabis sounds like a great idea, but based on any changes that may occur tomorrow, that there may be some new findings as to where to find the source of these funds?
From my perspective, yes, because I can adjust budget at that time to say it's coming from here and we need to put in these accounts.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, I just, um, I'll just, I, I agree with the recommendation that we use the cannabis funds at this time. And, um, we're going to have plenty of conversations tomorrow, completely agree, Supervisor Sabatier, but, um, my thought would be to go with the recommendation of the cannabis funds, uh, to get this moving forward, get it finalized. Um, you know, so, so those are my thoughts. I agree with that recommendation.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I'll offer the resolution.
Do I have to open it up for?
Oh, you do have to open it up.
Oh, for B.
For B.
Right.
The other point is that if you're going to, if you're going to prove something but put over a final decision until budget, then you should also include that. If you're just going to, to identify the cannabis funds today, then that will conclude it. So just to be clear.
So we could pass the resolution and discuss it at budgets, is what you're saying? Is what I'm hearing correct?
You can, but you're, you're going to have to, to make a motion that you, the funding is going to be determined, just so you have the continuity.
Okay.
See, otherwise you, you can't use the budget process just to pop things into.
All right. And so, uh, real quickly, I'll open it up for, uh, public input on item B, uh, which is consideration of funding source as either cannabis-generated funds or fund balance carryover. And there's no one in the chambers. I'm looking on Zoom. All right. So I'll bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor.
Just real quick before that, what is the maximum that we're looking at? There's 12 potential, um, employees to provide the incentives, uh, and then there's eight for the 20,000?
And we don't have a cap on the laterals because I have no idea. As I said, um, we typically don't draw laterals. I don't know if this would help us or not.
So there's 160,000 maximum at least for the category of a female applicant, uh, coming in? And then afterwards, uh, there may be a maximum of, um, 15 times 12?
It's an increase of half of that amount because we're already offering the $10,000 hiring incentive, so yes.
And then we have Stephen who raised his hand. Did you want to elaborate on something?
Well, what I want, did want to say is that the current hiring incentives are transferred out of cannabis, so if you wanted to stay with continuity, it would be cannabis and not half cannabis, half FDA.
All right.
60,000 plus another 80,000? So 140,000 maximum is what we're looking at?
I think we calculated around 135,000 in the first year for the retention incentives. Uh, and then another 80,000 over the course of mostly the impact in the second and third years, uh, because we're not restructuring the first year of the three-year commitment for females. It's going to be 5,000 for the first year, which would be the same as the current in hiring incentive, and then 7,500 in years two and three. So it'd be another 2,500 for each of those in years two and three. So, uh, and then, um, again, very, the, the lateral hiring incentive could be zero. It could be, it'd be great if we hired a whole bunch of people that decided they want to come here for that.
And I'm just looking for the maximum increase and I think it's around that 140. I think you were looking at the whole number, um, on a year one, year two. Is that correct, that you were looking at the whole number? That you were looking at the whole number? Yeah. Okay. I, I just needed to have that in my head. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Oh.
You were here for last week. Yeah, it's 135 year one, 20 in year two, and 70 in year, year three.
All right.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Martin.
Thank you. Appreciate the support.
Well, we have to do the.
We need, yeah, sorry. Sorry.
So I'm prepared. I'll make a motion. So we're, I move to identify the funding source of cannabis. Help me out here. I need if I get it right. I move to use cannabis funds to fund this program, new incentive program.
Mm-hmm. That's fine.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
And again, thank you. Appreciate the support very much.
All right. So I think if there's not anything else, we're at calendars. So let's see, Supervisor.
I'll go first.
Okay, Supervisor Piska, go ahead and start.
I want to really think that I'm in office. They've been really supportive of the climate action grant application that we've been working on. And we still have a couple more weeks to push that through, but I, you know, we've got a lot of meetings on those, and I really, really appreciate that help and support. Saturday, I went, I did coastal cleanup in Kelseyville with my children helpers, and we picked up 24 pounds of garbage and recycling. We also found 12 tires and a dump site that hopefully got picked up Monday before the flash flood. And then that night, I was at the wine auction dinner, which was amazing. Can't remember the exact amount. I know the goal was 250,000, and that goal was surpassed. So I want to thank everybody that comes out to that event. This is the biggest fundraiser we have in the county, and we have a lot of really great support in our community. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. Yesterday, we had our Risk Reduction Authority meeting, and I was chairing that. We got to five o'clock. We got two hours in and had to call it. So we only got halfway through our agenda. But there's a, a lot of, of work happening there, and I just, I really can't be more proud of the collaboration that we've built Supervisor Simon with our partners. And I think we'll be talking more about some of those projects in the near future. Oh, and last, was it Wednesday night? We had the CWPP Government-to-Government Meeting here in the chambers, and that went really well. We, we heard from some, some of our tribal nations, and Matthew received that input, and we'll have, our next one is October 5th here in the board chambers and on Zoom. So we're just trying to push that project through to adoption so that we are, have that tool that we can use, keep relevant, and most importantly, use it for future grants that we're working on. So that was all last week. So you know the next couple of days are going to be really long here. Friday is long too. Tree mortality meeting, that's the task force meeting. We meet monthly, and looking forward to hearing from our partners there. Then the home hardening meeting at 10:00. And then we have, with Director De Leon has a weekly staff meeting. But this one has the Conocti Fire Safe Council. So that, that's a meeting that we're having weekly to work on the, the tree program for the county and also the grant work with the Conocti Fire Safe Council. And then is the Pear Festival Dinner on downtown Main Street in Kelseyville. It's going to be really fun. They close off the street Saturday morning, early Pear Festival Parade. Driving the tractor. I got my lesson last week, so I'm good. And I'll probably be there all day. And I'm really hoping Sunday is the first day in a long, long time I have nothing to do. Monday, I'm going to be having a, a quick, new, special Risk Reduction Authority meeting at 9:00. My meeting with Susan at 10:30. Then we're going to have a climate collaborative grant meeting at noon. And then getting ready for Tuesday, and then back here on the 27th.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I was gone last week. Apologize for that, but thank you for keeping everything moving forward. The prior week to that, just want to say thank you to the Farm Bureau for putting together the AgVenture. We were on our second outing with the AgVenture. This time, first time we looked at pears. This time we were looking at grapes. So I had some good tours of some vineyards, tours of wineries. Definitely got to hear from a bunch of variety of perspectives, the economics of it and so on. So enjoying that learning process and looking forward to next month, which I believe is walnuts, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Then this past week, I was gone Tuesday morning. I went to Florida to Palm Beach County and had probably what I want to say was the best, like I've been to a lot of conferences, RCRC, CSAC, LAFCO, and, and League of Cities, and this was probably by far the best outing that I've ever had. I was with 20 other supervisors, which outside of the state of California is mostly known as commissioners. And from representing, I believe approximately 15 states, the entire group of the Economic Mobility Leadership Network is 26 individuals that have been chosen to be a part of that group. And I believe about 20 of them showed, showed up in Florida for this. So quite an intimate group, really got to know each other well, have real good conversations about what's happening in our areas, similar issues that we're dealing with. And so it was quite exciting to be in so many different groups of people that typically I'm not engaging with. What we were doing was looking at the economic change that has occurred in Palm Beach in the last four years. It has changed completely around from being a summer type of city where everything closes down after the fact to now being the new Wall Street of the South, where everybody from New York is moving down to Florida. And what have they done to attract those people? What have they done to change their housing, to affect, deal with the effective change of so many people moving in, their transit system? And it was really well organized, every, every major portion of it, whether it was the chamber, whether it was the transit, whether it was the county itself. We were only engaging with the CEOs, the executive officers, and so on. And it was quite the learning experience. Granted, what's happening in Palm Beach is not what's happening in Lake County. But again, the conversations that come out of there and the learning moments that come out of there, I think, are going to be significant. And I'm going to be looking to be bringing some stuff back to here in Lake County and bringing it back to the board. So that was phenomenal. And in January, I will be in Mobile, Alabama to do the same thing. And in May, it's, I'm going to get the county wrong. I think it's Coco Nego. Close. It's the county that has the Grand Canyon in Arizona. I wish I would have made it to that committee or that group a little bit earlier because before that, they also had a trip over to West Virginia to a very small rural environment, which I think would have been more of a learning moment for me in that area in comparison to Palm Beach. But either way, there's always something to learn. Came back on Friday and got to engage with a upcoming appeal that we still don't have a date on our calendar for, but got to learn about that project so I could be better prepared for when this comes to us. A lot to prepare for, for this week. As we know, we have the next two days of reviewing our budget. So getting ready for this meeting and getting ready for budget hearings has been pretty much a non-stop thing since I got back. Unfortunately, I have a lot of doubling up of meetings this week that I will not be able to make, such as LAFCO and the Ava Committee, but it sounds like we might just have a short meeting rather than a real meeting. I don't know if they're still having their normal meeting at 1:00.
No, this is going to be a real, a real short meeting at 3:00, yeah.
And then also, I will be missing Hope Rising on Thursday if we continue our budget hearings into that day. But budget hearing takes precedence. On Friday, I have a Housing Continuum of Care Navigation meeting, and then back on Monday again to meet with our CAO, prepare for our meeting here on Tuesday.
Supervisor Simon?
Got me looking at calendars. Flipped too far forward. So finishing up today, obviously, we said budget hearings the rest of the week, but I do want to talk about, did attend the CWPP Governance Meeting here in the chambers and also on Zoom. Previous to that, on Friday, attended the Workforce Alliance in North Bay meeting on Friday. To continue those conversations. Also had a meeting Friday afternoon on the budget with Stephen, spent some time on the Zoom with him to go over some things we'd be looking forward to move forward. Also attended the CMAT meeting yesterday. Did not make the Risk Reduction Authority meeting yesterday. Thank you Supervisor Piska. I know we've got some work to do on that. And just be ready for the rest of the week here. On Monday, we have the Risk Reduction Authority meeting. Let's continue to do that. We've already talked about my, my meeting, and Supervisor Piska's with Senator Maguire on Friday afternoon. So that's what I have, and be prepared for the next couple of days and the decisions we need to be making. Was added, as Supervisor Sabatier said, we have a 3:00 PM meeting tomorrow of the Ava Authority in a special meeting we'll be calling and approving our finalization of our grand jury response, so.
So with regard to that, if I could just ask, are we going to need to stop at about that time to just go ahead?
Yeah, I'm going to ask for a break, probably 30, 30 minutes or so, yeah.
Okay, okay. Just making sure now.
Maybe an hour, we should say, an hour.
Before, before it comes tomorrow.
I hope it's not that, but.
Yeah.
I would suspect that it's going to be a short, yeah.
I would say 30 minutes, just to be safe. I don't want to throw anything off.
And also, I'm going to request, but it's going to be up to the board and where we are with it. But I know that I, there is a, a war being given to someone from one of our committees that I had already said yes to, and it's at 12:00. And if it's possible to do a hard break at 12:00 for lunch, then that would make it possible for me to join. I can't say the name and I can't say the thing as a surprise.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. But I, you know, I did, I did forget the port. We did have the LTA meeting last week. In that, that meeting, we called that meeting for one more step in the process to bring to fruition our transit hub in Clearlake. So there were some actions that needed to be taken. I chaired that meeting in Stacey Matias' absence, and we moved forward with that. I signed the resolutions today, put them back in the mail. So that's one more step forward with the local transit hub that's going to be built down in Clearlake, which is, you know, a really good project and something that first came on. When I first came on the board, I think that was potentially my first meeting that I had ever attended at the Calpine Center with the LTA and APC, and it's great to see that project move forward.
Which includes a hydrogen station for the bus system.
It absolutely does.
I remember you brought that up before. All right, hydrogen, that is. So I, so thank you. I'll go ahead and start with last week. Right after the board meeting, I went straight to Napa for the RCRC Annual Meeting. And I'll just start out with the auction because I know that we were, we were all collecting all sorts of, you know, coupons, night stays, things like that, goodies. And basically, the amount was like $1,600 that we, that we raised amongst us. Unfortunately, it sold at 800. But the benefit is, I think, is that Denise Carter, the supervisor over in Colusa, who's retiring, and will probably make good use of that, of those, of those items, will be over here using those that she wanted in the auction. It was 67,000 was raised total for the nonprofits. And what, where that goes is whoever's the chair of the RCRC Committee can choose nonprofits in their, in their county to give some of this funding to or, or provide the funding to. So, so that, that was Thursday night. I just kind of jumped ahead because it's a, I just wanted to let everyone know what happened on that. Basically, Wednesday was, was a program, and the first initial discussion was about viability for tourism and recreation economy. And there was a gentleman, and I have his name here. I'll go ahead and say it since it was a, I don't want to misquote it, but his name was Greg Williams, and he was from the stewardship group introduct, incorporation. He was the executive director for the Sierra Butte Trail Stewardship Program. And they showed a video, video of how they worked to create trails in their hills to try to connect through counties, but also using mountain bikes. And so it was a really good opportunity. He, he talked about how their county was struggling with economics because of the, not only the fires, but also just the situation in general with businesses not being able to, to prosper, if that makes any sense. So they've worked around a lot of these different challenges, and they are working with like the National Forest Bureau of Land Management. They have maps that they're creating and they're trying to link the, the paths are about a, I want to say, says 100 feet wide, but I don't know, might, might be 100 inches. I don't know. But I have to, the way I, I put the little apostrophe, and I realize that 100 is way too far. But then again, I'll have to ask. But I have his information. I want to get ahold of him and talk to him because it'd be something that's ideal.
Very.
And I know that you do that, and you, and I talked to some folks about that, that you're doing this. So be a really good initiative to look at moving forward. And so that was a really, really good presentation. There was also broadband demystifying. Just basically, in summary, it was basically talking about how the three-headed tool to provide broadband is infrastructure, funding, digital equity. And basically, they were explaining the differences between how satellite, satellites, fiber optics, and I want to say wireless works. And so basically, the most, the most effective is of course fiber optics, but it's the most expensive, especially, well, the most expensive in rural counties. It's very difficult because we're so spread out. Wireless, there's only so much capacity that can be used in that, and then of course satellite. It goes dead, and it's just, there's capacity issues on that too. So these discussions were, were issues that us rural counties deal with. And so that's what I really appreciated is there's a lot of networking and talking about that and ideas that could help bolster, you know, different counties and kind of partner. One of the last items was of course flavors of the political stew and forecasts of 2024. And I, I think we can all just like know what that was about, basically. It was just about the polarization in, just basically in the United States right now. And so they're just talking about how it's going to look for 2024, what to be prepared for, what to look at. And I think, I don't want to belabor that discussion because we can go on all day, but that's basically what happened was just the talk amongst Paul Mitchell from Redistricting Partners and Mike Madrid from Grassroots Lab. The next day, there was basically another discussion about kind of the same thing, so I won't go into that as much. Thursday, we, Thursday afternoon, I went to talk with some folks about, I have it right, let me see. It was a discussion with some folks about vegetation and logging. Think kind of what we were talking about today, but some of the things that you were, you're usually working with on RRA. So what I did was I just got, grabbed his card and told them that we're working on things like this. But I wanted to make sure that I connected you two somehow, however that works. I don't want a Brown Act violation, but I just want to make sure that, yeah. So I, I've got to figure out how to get them the information when I met with them. So just give her the card and go from there. All right, good. Just making sure. Friday, of course, we had our, our board meeting with Golden State Connect. One of the big, one of the big topics was how 33 out of 45 applicants were from RCRC counties for the LAT-A program, and we were one of them to get it at the 11th hour. We got it in. The EDA grant, of course, you mentioned that last week too, that was approved. And that as soon as we notify, or we are notified, we should be ready to accept the award. And so we would need to be ready to accept it. That way the funding comes forward. That's the last process to it, and that's of course what we passed, I want to say on the 30th. So that they just basically just went over that. And also, let's see, continuing to communicate now, that's all basically the same thing. And then the Board of Directors meeting, they basically went over a lot of the, the different bills that were sent to the governor, AB 1249. I didn't write them down, and I should have. AB 1644, 1717, 522, and SB 926. Those are all on the governor's desk. And one of the biggest controversial ones that I know that And one of the biggest controversial ones that I know that Supervisor Sabatier brought was the Sheriff and Coroner, SB 1608, that died. So that's a, that's good news because that would have affected us in a really bad way. Care Court, obviously, I'm not sure if anyone knows, but that passed. One of the biggest things that's great is the RCRC. And they had the opportunity to provide comment to help with counties like ours to provide policy changes. And so they played a really good intricate role in that. And I'm pretty sure Stacy Heaton and Sarah Duquette were really part of the policy work as well. And so RCRC did what they could to help us with our concerns on that. Because they were having a lot of meetings online and Zoom that, you know, our employees, our directors were attending and whatnot. So that played a really big role. Cannabis Interstate Commerce passed. Let's see, there's a couple other that still need to be, to work. Of course, there was some Brown Act discussion as well. AB 2647 and AB 2449 is sunsetting, so they're working on some of those as well to come forward and have some more amendments and revisions. And so that was basically, I want to say it when it came to those. And so I'll go on to my calendar. Wednesday, so of course I was at that. There was, oh, no, I'm sorry. Sorry. Afterwards, we are doing agenda review here. And then instead of in the morning, because we're coming straight to budgets, there's a Worth meeting tomorrow at 5:30 in Upper Lake. Budget hearings Thursday, so we'll be doing that as well. I have a meeting with the constituent on Friday in Nice. And then, let's see, on Monday, obviously, a meeting, CAO meeting, and then back to the board here on Tuesday. And I don't know if there's anything else anybody missed or would like to announce. All right, with that, I think that covers everything on our agenda. So I'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you for tuning in and we'll see you next week.